Good evening. I'd like to call the April 13, 2023 meeting of the Greenville City Council to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connelly and I'll be presiding over tonight's meeting. First, I'd like to call on Mayor Protem Glover for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's break. Good Lord, I have been invited. We thank you for the opportunity to serve your people. And God, we try to do the best that we can, and we lean on you to give us that support. Thank you, Lord, for all these people who are interested in the government that are here today. And we pray that you will continuously bless everyone. In Jesus' name I pray.
Amen.
Amen.
We have a special, a couple of guests today to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, right here. Come on up to the dais, guys.
Yeah, come on up here. How you guys doing?
Good.
Good. All right, so tonight, we have a couple of special guests to lead the Pledge of Allegiance. Michael Jenkins Jr. and Drew Monroe are students at Lake Forest Elementary School here in Greenville. These two enjoy a friendship that began when they were teammates with the Pitt-Greenville Titans program. Tonight, we asked these two boys to join us to come and share about their recent situation between the two of them, that they demonstrated the importance of preparation and the willingness to act when necessary. On March 22, in the Lake Forest Cafeteria, Michael and Drew were having lunch, when Michael noticed that Drew was coughing and struggling to breathe. Using his knowledge of the Heimlich maneuver, which was taught to him by his father, Michael responded immediately to Drew and was able to dislodge the food that was choking him. It was a scary situation that could have been much worse if not for the heroic acts of Michael. The incident highlighted the importance of learning life-saving strategies such as the Heimlich and CPR. We hope that everyone will consider such trains, so that you can provide assistance if there's ever a need. On behalf of the City Council, we admire your courage, and we welcome both of you here tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's give them a round of applause. Drew, you want to say anything?
[laughing]
You guys?
[inaudible]
All right. In honor of this, we've got a special recognition. We've got a special certificate for you, Michael, just to show our thanks and our appreciation for all that you did to help Drew out.
One more. [applause]
You guys ready?
Nice and loud, nice and loud.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, children. Thank you, families.
Good work, good work. All right, we'll now move on to the roll call. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Connelly.
Here.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson has let us know he will not be attending tonight. Councilmember Bell has let us know that he will not be attending tonight as well. Mayor Connelly, you have a call.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to approval of tonight's agenda. Madam Manager, any recommended changes?
Yes, Mayor, I would request the following items. We would need to remove the special recognition for Mr. James Ward. We would also need to remove item number 16 from the agenda. And finally, we would like to add a closed session. The city attorney will have the closed session motion at the end of the meeting.
Move to approve the agenda as revised.
We've got one more item, too, to continue the election.
Oh, I'm sorry. And I think we would suggest to the council that they also continue item number 17, consideration of the additional one-stop voting sites to the first meeting in May.
All right. I move, we approve the agenda as amended.
Six.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Ms. City Manager, is that going to be the May 8 meeting, then? We have the workshop and then the meeting.
Right, would be, the first meeting in May would be the May 8 night. Okay.
All right. Now to the most anticipated point of the meeting tonight. The public comment period is a period reserved for comments by the public. Items that were or scheduled to be the subject of a public hearing conducted at this meeting or another meeting during the same week shall not be discussed. A total of 30 minutes is allocated with each individual being allowed no more than three minutes. Individuals who did register with the city clerk to speak will speak in the order registered until the allotted 30 minutes expires. If time remains after all persons who have registered have spoken, individuals who did not register will have an opportunity to speak until the allotted 30 minutes expires. Madam Clerk, our first speaker.
Yes, sir. Ms. Shamena Horton. You've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you all. My name is Shamena Horton. I'm here on behalf of Tennis Courts, as you may have guessed by now. I'd just like to give you a little bit of information about me. I decided two years ago to play tennis. So I went to West Greenville Tennis Courts to learn how to play tennis. That's where I learned, and that's why I was still playing until the swimming pool moved in. I've since played at River Birch and at Elm Street. I've even taken my grandsons to both places. I really enjoy this sport. I actually play league tennis now because of what I learned in West Greenville. I enjoy the fact that I can go to a public court, not have to join and play tennis as I want to. I also enjoy the fact that now that I've taken my grandsons with me, they now enjoy playing tennis. I appreciate the fact that we had those tennis courts available, and that we still have some available. I'm just here to let you know what impact it has done for me. I have actually won some league games, as a matter of fact, a couple trophies.
All right.
But I appreciate the fact that because I wanted to learn to play tennis, it was available to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Horton. Madam Clerk, our next speaker.
And y'all, just so we can keep it moving, if you all just would please refrain from any kind of show of clapping. Y'all know what I mean. Next speaker is Ms. Lou Michelotto. Or Mr. Lou Michelotto.
I was 15 before I could pronounce it. Hi, my name's Lou Michelotto. Thank you, City Councilmembers, for listening to the perspectives and thoughts of a 75-year-old tennis player. I started playing tennis in inner-city Chicago. The tennis courts were multipurpose courts, all with two basketball courts, all with a wall that where we could play handball or paddle ball. Roller skaters, bike riders also used the courts. The multipurpose benefit had everyone in the community able to do something on those courts. With Elm Street conversion to tennis courts to pickleball courts, the courts are now a single-purpose court. No longer can the courts be used for tennis or anything else. Multipurpose is now dead. Does the city council know that there's 24 million tennis players in the United States? 70% of those players play on city courts. There's an estimated 3 million United States Tennis Association players that play league all around the country. There are USTA leagues in Greenville for men, women, children, seniors. Leagues are structured for players with limited talent, or for players who have a tremendous amount of talent, and all levels in between. On any given tennis league night, there's up to 80 Greenville players that are playing somewhere on a court in the Greenville area. Greenville launched a tennis program called Try Tennis, which developed over 300 players to play tennis. Recently, I spoke to a park ranger who told me that Elm Street courts were no longer needed. He said that tennis players could use Evans Park or River Birch. Tennis courts at River Birch during the day are filled with tennis lessons, or clinics, or the ECU ladies tennis team practices. Just a side note, from what I understand, the fees that ECU has paid the city to use those tennis courts could have easily bought pickleball courts. In the evening, River Birch courts are filled with either league play or league practice. The Evans courts are reserved at night for ECU club practices. Tennis city courts during prime time are really slim for the availability. Over the years, there have been 27 tennis courts eliminated in Greenville, while the population of the city has doubled in the same period. Greenville City Courts developed a great player named Tommy Paul. Tommy Paul is now ranked in top 20 in the world and number three in the United States. He developed his hard-court skills at Elm Street Park. I understand and love the need for tennis courts, but why didn't we build a new facility? A part person who was quoted in the paper is saying the reason that pickleball courts were not built.
And that's time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Michelot.
Come on, y'all. All right. Next speaker is Mr. Rodney Bailey. Mr. Bailey, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good afternoon. My name is Rodney Bailey. I am the president of Down East Community Tennis Association, and we are the local arm of the United States Tennis Association. So each, every two years, we bid on state tournament. Last year and this year, we have two tournaments. Last year, those two tournaments brought in over $350,000 into the economy of Greenville. We brought in over 800 players in those two tournaments. We lost out on three tournaments because we didn't have enough tennis courts to hold those tournaments. Some of these tournaments need over 40 courts. The majority of them, we can get by with, because we use outside courts like Snow Hill, and we have used Washington in the past, and now we're even considering Kefton and Wilson, because we don't have enough courts in Greenville. So the guidelines for USTAV says we can't use pickleball courts, or we can't use tennis courts that have pickleball lines on them. So that limits us. Tennis is a diverse sport. Over 38% of the tennis players in America are minorities. And with the Down East Community Tennis Association, we have a diversity and inclusion program. And we started that last year with the Operation Sunshine. We did a six-week program with Operation Sunshine, a tennis league, I'm sorry, tennis clinic, and we're planning on doing it again this year. We would love to have those three tennis courts back. We have nothing against pickleball, we just need tennis courts. I yield back the rest of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Next speaker is Mr. Daniel Moore. Mr. Moore, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Does it start when it gets to the mic?
Yes, it starts when it gets to the mic.
[laughing] Thank you, City Councilmen and women, and the mayor. I'm Dr. Daniel Moore. I've worked for ECU School of Medicine as a rehab physician, and I was medical director of the rehab hospital and department chair of rehab medicine. I basically have worked with patients that have physical disabilities over the years, trying to get those folks back moving again, getting them to regain strength, go back to home, go back to work, go back to play and school, very important things. I've been an advocate for physical activity my whole career, but I wanted to talk about the health benefits of tennis. Did you know playing tennis, just three hours per week, can reduce your risk of cardiovascular disease by 56%? One long-term study showed that tennis players had 9.7 years added to their lifespan over sedentary individuals. And playing tennis has a wide range of health benefits to make it an ideal physical activity for anyone at any age. Youth players, teamwork, social skills, sportsmanship, coordination, agility balance, strategic thinking, problem solving, self-confidence. And then there's the older adults and seniors. I'm now in that crowd, 61. I started playing in my 50s. But it helps with strong bones, reducing stress, cardiovascular fitness, weight loss, new relationships that I've made within the community. And here they are. Numerous studies proving the benefits. One was a large study in a sports medicine journal looking at over 80,000 people. And it basically showed that a sport like tennis was associated with a reduced risk of all-cause mortality, reduction of mortality by 47%. And this is just one of many studies that prove the physical benefits. Dr. Brian Handline, the chief medical officer for the NCAA, has said tennis was the best overall sport for body and mind. And I'm sure you're aware of the loss of the tennis courts at Elm Street. And again, it's the trend over the years that I guess I wanted to try to convey to the group here. The 16 courts at ECU, the four courts at J.C. Park years ago, two courts from West Greenville years ago, now three courts at Elm Street. And it's a downward trend with the tennis courts that really should be going upward. The population in Greenville is trending upwards. 23 million tennis players in the USA, and from 2019 to 2022, there's an increase of 6 million players, 30% increase. So we actually have stagnant, if we had stagnant population in Greenville, just the interest in tennis going up says we need more of a need. But we have increased interest, we have increased growth of the population going up, we have the tennis courts going down. So I think it's just very important that we think about now as well as long-term planning for the city of Greenville. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Dr. Moore.
Varnell.
Yes. You've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
My name is Drew Varnell. Thank you for allowing me to share my tennis story with you tonight. I was born and raised right here in Greenville. And if Greenville is known as Sportstown USA, then I was born in the right place. My sports career started as a three-year-old playing soccer at PGSA Soccer Complex. As a youth, I played baseball at Elm Street, flag football at J.C. Park, and basketball at Boyd Lee Park, and in the upper league. I played football at Hook Middle School and DH Conley, and ran cross-country for DH Conley at Boyd Lee Park. But it wasn't until one Saturday morning in 10th grade that I truly found my sports passion. It was on the courts at Elm Street Park when me and my family went to play tennis. I was hooked from day one. We would have many Saturday family matches at Elm Street from that day on, and we learned quickly that you need to get there at about 8:00 a.m. if you wanted to be sure to get a court. You see, waiting around for an open court is not something a family does. If the courts are full, the family simply goes back home. Our love for tennis led both my sister and I to join the tennis team at DH Conley, where she still plays today. We always look forward to the season, but if you want to be good at tennis, you must practice a lot. The problem is, we were only allowed to practice on the school courts during the tennis season, and if it was a scheduled school practice. Because of that, many high school students go to Elm Street Park to practice. After high school, I attended East Carolina University. If you were living in the dorms at ECU, Elm Street Park is the place to play tennis. It's really the only convenient place to play, especially if you were a freshman with limited access to your car. My friends and I would frequently walk over to Elm Street to play. After making the club tennis team at ECU, we initially practiced at Elm Street Park, but eventually had to move to River Birch Tennis Center due to public competition for court time at Elm Street. I graduated from ECU this past December and am still active in tennis. My entire family is as well, and we all got our tennis star at Elm Street Park. We still have those family matches, and they're something we always look forward to. My point tonight is that tennis courts that were taken at Elm Street Park were still actively being used for their original purpose, tennis. Yes, there are other places to play in tennis in Greenville, like River Birch Tennis Center and nearby racket clubs, where the passion for tennis is strong. But the passion was born for me and my family on the courts at Elm Street Park. Sacrificing one sport for another is not something you do in Sportstown USA, not because it's cheaper, not because it's easier, and not because that is what has been done in other places. In Sportstown USA, you find a way to do them both, and you do them better than anybody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next speaker is Mr. Don Mills. Mr. Mills, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Don Mills. I was born in Greenville, North Carolina, many years ago for hospitals. This is a great community, and I've been glad to be a part of this community all these years. I'm also a lifelong tennis player. I play three or four times a week all year long. I see a lot of my friends that are tennis players. I see a lot of my friends that play pickleball. Pickleball, just like tennis, is a great sport that provides exercise, friendly competition, social activity, and can be enjoyed all year long. At this time, I would like to share a letter with you written by Henry Hostetler, a great friend, tennis player, and coach, and a great community citizen. Quote, "My name is Henry Hostetler. I was the owner of Baywood Racket Club for the past 25 years. Before that, I worked for the city of Greenville as the tennis director for 13 years. I have also been heavily involved with the NC Tennis Association and the USTA Southern Section. Promoting the great sport of tennis is what I do. Obviously, I have not done that well enough. I do hope that you are now aware that there is a tennis community in Greenville." As has been said earlier, one tennis court has been demolished every year for the past 27 years. Now, I have nothing against pickleball that replaced the three courts at Elm Street. I also have nothing against swimming that replaced the two West Greenville courts, nor do I have anything against picnic shelters and playgrounds that replaced four J.C. Park courts years ago. I do not have anything against food either. When a cafeteria replaced eight College Hill courts. I also don't have anything against sororities and fraternities and bands before football games that took over the eight courts behind Menge's Coliseum, or maybe take care of those. And lastly, I do not have anything against a nice, grassy area that took over the two courts at Pitt Community College. And interesting enough, all these courts were very popular places to play tennis. My question is this, what does Greenville and ECU have against tennis? A sport that was pronounced by NCAA medical officer as the best sport for life, mind, and body. It seems to me that we should be promoting the sport and not getting rid of it. However, what's done is done, pass is passed. Let's look to the future. I like Greenville, and I want to continue to see it prosper. I am asking the council to put forward a task force to explore a partnership with ECU to build a tennis complex for the community. I would be glad to serve if needed on such a task force. Signed, Henry Hostetler. At the end of the day, let's make this a win-win. A win-win for pickleball and a win-win for tennis. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker is Jay Searls. Mr. Searls, you've got three minutes.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I appreciate y'all's service to our city and everything you do. My name's Jay Searls. Greenville native, born and raised, 52 years old, went to Rose High, ECU, still work at ECU, love this place. I'm a baseball player. I thought this was a baseball town. And you know, I grew up playing junior novice tennis at Elm Street, and Henry was out there teaching. And that shows how long he's been around and the respect I have for him. Now, at age 52, I find myself a part of the tennis community after a hiatus of coaching and playing and whatever in baseball. But my wife coaches tennis at South Central Hospital. So we're invested in tennis. I'm glad that I have found tennis at an older age and can get out and enjoy it. The perception is that tennis is a country club sport, and the more we keep getting rid of public courts, the more we're going to reinforce that perception, and it's going to be a reality, because you're going to have to join Baywood, you're going to have to join Wimbledon or somewhere in order to even be able to play. So that's a factor to consider. I drive down Elm Street Park, down Elm Street every day to and from work. It's always been full of people, as long as the weather's decent. Morning, afternoons, always full of tennis players. If it was an unused court, I could understand it a little bit, but it's not. It's prime time. What if we weren't talking about tennis courts? What if we replaced a baseball field for wiffle ball? Can you imagine that? And it happened as quickly as it did? What if you found out that during that time, it happened, and nobody talked to RV, nobody talked to Clay Medlin, nobody talked to Ryan Weingartz, even Marvin Jarman didn't know about it? And that's pretty much what's happened here. Henry Hostetler knew nothing about this. Morgan Hardy, Rose High tennis coach, knew nothing about it, blindsided. Rodney Bailey, president, knew nothing about it. How's that happen? You know, my dad used to say, Ray Charles can see that. We know what happened, right? Somebody had an agenda, and it was pickleball. And this isn't about pickleball versus tennis, but it's kind of, the debate turns into that. How does this happen without being publicized, without any kind of community input? Obviously, if there was a meeting called, we'd have had a few people show up, right? So anyway, I'm going to wrap it up. I'd like to see the courts restored at Elm Street. That may or may not happen.
And that's time.
After that much money's been spent. But I think we all know that somebody else pointed out, there's a lot of money coming in from ECU to tennis. I think that money should be earmarked for tennis, not to go to the rest of the recreation department. And I think we need to maintain what we got and keep tennis on the agenda in the future.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Watson Davenport. You've got three minutes to address the mayor and council. Next speaker is Watson Davenport. You've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
My name is Watson Davenport. I am a senior at DH Connolly High School. I have been a tennis player for my high school for all four years. And outside of that school, I started playing tennis in the fourth grade. Now, tennis wasn't a main sport of mine until my freshman year. But before that, I played baseball, swam, and I think track and field. But none of those sports stuck out to me as much as tennis did. And I'm lucky to say that some of the best friendships I've ever made as a high school tennis player did not come from my time in class, but came from my time on the courts with my teammates, both on my team and on other teams. And when playing this sport for as long as I have, you realize that there's a lot of people that don't have the privilege to be a member of a private tennis court like Baywood. They have to go out to Elm Street. They have to go out to River Birch. Now, I started out in River Birch in the fourth grade. I did some clinics out there, and it was fun. And then we did some events at Elm Street. And I have to say that I realize how important Elm Street and River Birch are, not just to me, but to everybody else my age, or older or younger, that play this sport on a regular basis. We go out there, we have fun, we get our physical activity in. And overall, we just play the sport that is tennis. And it just does not sit right with me that you can go and replace some courts and turn them into pickleball courts and not have anybody know about it. It's important. It's important to us. There's a major tennis community in this town. And everybody migrates to Elm Street, whether they're a member of a private club or not. So that's what I wanted to say, but thank you.
Thank you, Davenport.
All right, Mr. Mayor. Next speaker is Marvin Hardy. Mr. Hardy, you've got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
My name is Marvin Hardy. I am the president of the Greenville Tennis Association, also head coach at Rose High School. When they removed the courts from West Greenville, which we've been doing over there for 40 years, and put a swimming pool over there, I was very disappointed. But it's reminded that they might replace them, but they've been three, four years ago, I guess. Anyway, as Shemita came up early, she was one of my students. We taught over a thousand kids over there, hundreds, thousands, not hundreds, a thousand, a thousand kids over there during the last 40 years. Volunteer, we do it two days a week, from April to the last, Thursday to Wednesday, July. And it would start back up in September, last Monday in September, to the Thursday, Wednesday before Thanksgiving. Free of charge, any age, we do from four to eight, eight-years-old. So that's what we do free. We've been doing that for over 40 years over there. Very disappointed when they told us that they were going to take the courts out. They did meet with us. It wasn't a surprise, but at the time they met with us, they told us that they had two sites, and they hadn't made a decision to leave the site yet. But I knew it was going to be West Greenville for some reason. But anyway, that's what happened with that. Also, years ago, tennis was responsible for Greenville becoming Sportstown USA, United States Sportstown USA. Because when they came by West Greenville over there, they saw all these kids out there at 6:00 at night taking tennis lessons that we were doing. Also use River Birch. And I think that's what got us over the hump for being Sports Illustrated, Tennis USA, over there. As at Rose High School, I had to turn away people from walking from Evans Park or River Birch over there to play tennis. Because we do our after-practice, I had to close the gates up. And it's very disappointing to see people walk over there. By the fact, last week, this week, a man had walked all the way across the street with his little child, and I tell him, say, "Hey, we're closing at 5:30, because this is for a practice." Okay? So it's kind of, we need more courts. We definitely need more courts. Because there's a lot of tournaments, like Rodney said, that's coming this way. But we can't afford, because we don't have the courts. Then I gotta go to Wilson, and all that revenue will go to Wilson or Rocky Mountain or somewhere and take revenue from Greenville. So thank y'all for my time. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
Okay. And let me stop that. We've got Kaki McLeod. Got three minutes to address the mayor and council.
Hi, my name is Kaki MacLeod.
MacLeod, sorry.
Let me ask, have you got Kaki right, which is nice. My name is Kaki MacLeod, and I grew up in Greenville, North Carolina. I grew up in the neighborhood right behind Elm Street Park. And it has truly been an asset for my entire life that I've been here. I'm also proud of everything that has been done by the Greenville Parks and Recreation Department, and we appreciate it. I'm here tonight to represent the pickleball player community. I am a pickleball player. And first of all, we'd like to say thank you very much for funding the first-ever regulation outside public pickleball courts in Greenville, North Carolina. You drive by there after work after 5:00, and you'll see that they're already packed with people playing pickleball. The second thing I want to say is we, as pickleball players, also support the needs of the tennis community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisk.
Mayor Connolly, you have time, about three minutes for one more speaker.
Is no one else has signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was there a David Yun? Sorry.
All right, you come and speak, and then we can...
Okay.
Mr. Yun can speak. If you want to come up, you can come speak. Yeah, and then Mr. Yun can speak right after that. I'm sorry, Mr. Yun.
No, you're good.
We're not playing with you.
Yeah, I am Nick Polakaski. A little nervous, because I wasn't planning on speaking. So in 2005, I came here from Fort Collins, Colorado. Nice town. You guys are starting to catch up. Fort Collins, loads of bike trails, loads of outdoor activities. Come here, like, what am I going to do? I build a climbing wall in my shed, because they're climbing over there, mountains and everything. And then, you know, tennis, right? That's active, something I can do. So it was something that I really, really had a joy in doing, because, you know, you guys are still catching up. I know you have limited funds and options, but it was something I could do. And since I still, you know, have some movement in me, maybe pickleball would be in my future. But right now, it's tennis, and it's kind of sad. Because Elm Street was a place where, you know, we'd just go and we'd play. It's got great ambiance. It's great for playing tennis. It's just sad, because with three courts, I'm not even going to consider going there, because I know the options, there won't be an option there. It's just all I wanted to say.
All right, thank you. Do we still have, do we still have time, or do any of the council need to extend the time?
They need to extend the time.
Do I have a motion from the council to extend the public comment period time?
So moved.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
Hey there, councilmembers. My name is David Yun. I'm 17-years-old, a student at DH Connolly High School, and have been playing tennis for four years now. Two hours ago, I received a text from my mother that we no longer had as many tennis courts as we did at Elm Street. And to be frank, I was very disappointed. And then I got a text saying that citizens, who were also disappointed, were coming to the city council tonight and expressing their voice. My friends and I were so excited about this fact that we rushed over. And when we saw that there was a green sheet outside to sign up and speak, I very hurriedly signed up. And in my excitement, I forgot to write a speech. And so, thank you for saving me for last. But while I was sitting in the audience listening, I wanted to share these two stories I had, very heartfelt stories. But during COVID-19, in times of isolation and anxiety, when our entire world was turned upside down, tennis was my open door to find peace, to de-stress. When I was told that I had COVID-19 and my two weeks of quarantine were over, the first thing I did was ask a couple buddies of mine if they wanted to meet at Elm Street and play tennis. We agreed, and it became a routine. It became natural, and tennis became more. It became a way for me to not only de-stress, but to find a community of other like-minded peers. Councilmembers, my favorite thing about Greenville is that we are changemakers. It is that we act when we need to. We advocate for what we are passionate about, and we fix our wrongs. Councilmembers, we did not come out here to waste our time. All these people in our room today, we want to let you know that our voice needs to be heard. Please undo those courts. Fix and return our tennis courts. Give what we deserve to the people of Greenville. Our motto here in Greenville is that you'll find yourself in good company. We find ourselves in good company because we are good people, and good people know when they have made a wrong. Councilmembers, please, listen to the voice of not only the people in this room, listen to the voice of the people of Greenville, of the committee members who are just like me. Please, just listen and return what we deserve. Thank you.
I think we just got lied to. He said he didn't prepare a speech. That was pretty darn good on the fly right there.
Be kind of the cleanup batter.
Probably didn't have more time.
Anyone else that wants to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hey, my name is Neil Driver. Thank you for letting me come and speak. These tennis courts and the pickleball courts literally back up to my property. I think I have the closest experience for everybody. Before, I guess, January, I probably had played just a few hours of tennis in my life. Terrible at it, horrible at it. But some guys in my neighborhood, over in Brook Green, next to Kaki, they put together a little group for just whoever wanted to come out and play pickleball to just come out and experience it. Well, I played basketball and baseball all my life, but tennis wasn't my thing, so I gave pickleball a go. Before this week, we had been bringing our own nets. It could be anywhere from eight to 12 of us. You know, everybody was out there at night. You know, we don't even get other school 8:00 o'clock at night, and everybody's out there playing pickleball on the tennis courts. You know, we bring our own nets. Now that we've taken these courts and made them permanent pickleball courts, last night is the first time we ever got to experience playing on those. And I can tell you, it was awesome. We had 10 people show up. Normally, you know, everybody's just, "Oh, great, we'll be out there maybe." But everybody was excited to get out there and play. My experience is Parks and Rec's job is to get people out of their house doing things that, you know, prolongs their life. I think you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Driver. Anyone else that wants to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
I'll step on in. My name is Abdul Jordan. Henry Hostetler sent me a text, and he's not even here. I live in Maryland now. I teach tennis. I have a tennis management company. River Birch has pretty much been my life and a part of my family's life for the past 40 years. I remember when those courts were built. A lot of people in here are connected to me, and I'm connected to them through tennis. It is a miracle that, I mean, my dad even laughs at me today, that I'm a tennis instructor, run tennis tournaments, involve kids the same way that Henry involved me. Greenville has been a great part of my life, from Little League Baseball to the Boys and Girls Club across from it, living in Lakeview Terrace, where there used to not be a fence between Lakeview Terrace and River Birch. I remember jumping the ditch to run down to the courts for Henry to hand me a racket. Same thing with my brother. Tennis has meant a lot to us, even today in coming down, playing with the Rose High School team. My legacy with Rose High School, being the only male player in the Hall of Fame, started at River Birch. Henry sending me that text, pretty much saying 27 courts in 27 years, was just mind-blowing. Henry saying to me that ECU does not care about tennis. Now, my university at North Carolina A&amp;T has just brought their tennis program back. To not see the men's program at ECU, going by and seeing the courts there today, was very disappointing. Now, I know that's not the control of everyone here. But my thought with this, when I was texting with Henry, is what is going to be the connection between the Greenville, those that make decisions with the Parks and Rec, with ECU, where the largest amount of courts have disappeared? Seeing Menjies, I mean, and playing literally on every court in Greenville in my time, I think that a partnership would be necessary, so that it's not just a discussion, but there are actions being taken. Going by Elm Street today, I had to see it for myself. It was great to see, because the facility's really nice. But it was disappointing to not see that the tennis courts were still there. When I was in high school, that was where we played my freshman year, before the new Rose became. And then we ended up starting playing at River Birch. So to see those courts and really see myself as a high school freshman, an eighth or ninth grader at EVA Coop, because Rose was a senior high school then, and then moving on and seeing the courts that I played on and how pivotal River Birch and Elm Street were to my life, it was just painful to see. So that this doesn't end up becoming just talk. I would love for it to be a sort of task force. I would do what I can. I have a nonprofit back in Maryland where I introduce tennis to kids, work on their educational and social skills, because tennis was a big part of my life. So those that are here that have spoken, it was great to see that they spoke. And I hope that something positive can come out of this, even though at the moment for tennis, it doesn't look that way. Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you, Ms. George. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hey, everybody. My name is Kirsten Burgess. I am the ECU women's tennis coach. And I felt compelled to speak after listening to everybody, because I've been here 22 years, and I've literally played on every single court that's been destroyed except for the J.C. Park. So I would say I'm probably one of the most affected people in this room, because the courts that I played on as a collegiate tennis player are no longer existing. The courts that I'd like to send my players to who don't have cars, they are international students. The city has provided those courts that they can just go to whenever they want to play. Those are no longer available. And my girls always ask me, "Why do we practice at River Birch? Why don't we practice at Elm Street?" Well, the reason is, is I don't want to take that time away from the city. There are too many people that use those courts. And if we're out there using those courts, that's not fair to the rest of the city. It's really not. So thankfully, the city does provide courts for us at River Birch. I appreciate that more than you guys can ever realize. Because again, like I said, the support from the university has not always been wonderful. But we just cannot use those courts at Elm Street, because they are not ours. They belong to the city. They belong to the Greenville, the residents of this city. And I think it's crazy that they no longer have those spaces. And I, too, drive past those courts every day going to school. And they are full every day, every single day. And I mean, I'm not against pickleball either. I appreciate that there is a pickleball community, and I think that they should have somewhere to play. Now, obviously, I'm an advocate for exercise, and I think it's a great sport for those who aren't as mobile as they'd like to be anymore. But at the cost of this tennis community, it cannot be accepted. So if there is, in fact, any chance of a future where the city and the university can work together to create something that not just we can use selfishly, but that we can then provide other programs to the youth of this town, I'm all for it. I will be your biggest supporter. I will be the person who's out there spending all their time providing those programs. I'm in. I'm all in. So let me know. Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period? Please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Peter. I play tennis. My kids play tennis. So I have been in Elm Street court in the past three days, like 5:00, 7:00 p.m., every day. Sometime I probably have four, five times a week. That's very normal for my family. Sometime I probably have four or five times a week, that's very normal for my family. And I saw a lot of pickleball players there. I can understand, they have a need, yes, they do. And there's a lot of people, especially when the court just opened, it's like 5:00, 5:00 p.m., 6:00 p.m., it's all packed. Yes, there's a need for them, but for the tennis community, it's just not fair for them to, you know, you guys take out the court without anyone notifying. And there's a huge need there, and there's a huge need there. So I'm just hoping, you know, for any future actions like this, at least get some public input, so that, you know, we can kind of balance it. You know, there's all other sports, they all need budget, they all need attention. So my kids are swimmers as well, and I bet, you know, there's a lot depend on the parents or requests from the parents to, you know, we are hoping to have a 15-meter pool in the city as well. Other sports, other sports, they all need something. My impression is that I think, it might not be right, but I, the impression for a lot of people is that the city focuses on certain sports way more than others. For example, baseball. Baseball's great, you know, there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of effort there, and we produce very good players, but if we put too much budget or attention to certain sports, they're just not fair to other sports. So, you know, I just hope that in the future, when the budgets come in, we'll consider all the sports as well. Pickleball, tennis ball, other sports, swimming, of course. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, Mayor Conley, can I get his name?
Mr. Peter, I heard Peter.
Peter? Mr. Peter? Okay.
All right, anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Caroline Leonard, and I'm a senior at DH Conley. And ever since I was a little girl, I've always been painfully shy. I've been, I've struggled at making friends and, like, basic social skills. And then, fourth grade, once I started playing tennis, I discovered a community of really awesome individuals, and I was able to find that space where I could be myself and make a lot of friends, and it was really a nice time for me. And although I haven't really been able to play tennis because of the toll that a high school senior has, I have always enjoyed playing it at Elm Street. And when I learned that pickleball courts were added, I was upset. Like, obviously, I would love for pickleball players to have the space to be able to play their sport, and hopefully later on, we can find a space for them to play. But like people have previously said, we don't have a lot of space available to play in Greenville, play tennis. Sorry. All right, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Jenny Deppsey, and I grew up here in Greenville in history with Elm Street and walking to the old Rose High. And my father was the president of the Greenville Tennis Association at Elm Street Park, and we've had a lot of good times there. But, you know, after school, I moved away. When I came back to Greenville like 15 years ago and moved back here, I kind of felt my way into tennis again a little bit, and it was at River Birch. And I have met so many of these people, played on teams with these ladies right out here, played on mixed doubles teams with these people back here, and just had such a wonderful reintroduction. And it was because of, you know, the Elm Street Park Courts, the River Birch Courts. Yes, we all are friends, whether we play at Baywood or River Birch or wherever. I am not at all opposed to pickleball. I think there's a place for both in our community, and I'd like to see more of both. So thank you, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Miss Davis. All right, anybody else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
I am not a tennis player and I am not a pickleball player. I am here to represent tennis in the community and pickleball. My husband, Alan Hines, is a former ECU tennis player. He plays tennis and he plays pickleball. We live out at Brook Valley. They have, we voted and it was passed that we could have our tennis courts redone. Yay! And they're going to have one tennis court and four pickleball courts. I believe that's right. But during COVID, and someone else mentioned this, my granddaughter was going to be home by herself for a week, and they were, you know, alternating, her brother going into school and her. So my daughter was very concerned that she would be home alone. And my husband, Alan Hines, and Abdul knows him, because he used to play with him when Abdul, he's told me this story when he was a little kid, and got him all interested, and he's got an amazing place now. He got involved with our granddaughter, and now she's playing tennis. She made the tennis team at Rose last year. She's still working and trying to get better. And I agree with what a lot of people have said, there's room for both. And I've learned a lot here today, because I didn't know how it, how it came to be that, I mean, I didn't know so many tennis courts were eliminated, and of course, people didn't know pickleball was around, or maybe it wasn't even a popular sport. But I think people are really feeling the pain of, I can tell, the pain of the loss of this, and I guess not knowing that it was going to happen is what I'm understanding. So I'm here as a representative, because my husband couldn't be here, my granddaughter's out at Baywood, and I know as a single mother raising two kids, I, and my mother worked too, and I never had the opportunity to learn to play, but I wouldn't have been able to afford to send my children to a club. And I know there are many, many, many people in this, in every town, you know, and everywhere that can't afford that. So I just felt the need to stand up and say, thank you for all you do. I hope we can find a solution to make everybody happy, which is going to be difficult.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. All right, anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Jacob Hostetler. I'm probably the last person anybody expected to come up here. So I know you've heard the name Henry Hostetler many times tonight. I'm actually his son. My sister is in the back also. And I just wanted to say that tennis has been a sport for all my life, all of our whole family's love. And my dad actually owns Baywood Track Club. He's owned it, well, not anymore, I will say, but he owned it for about 25 years, opening back in 94. And I played pickleball one time, and it was fun, but I will say tennis is much more fun, in my opinion. But just the main thing I want to say is, like someone mentioned earlier, sacrificing one sport for another is not something that needs to be done. I think, I think we can have pickleball over here and tennis over here, and everyone can be happy. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that'd like to speak during the public comment period, please come forward, state your name for the record. It looks like that's it. We'll close the public comment period. Thank you, everyone, for coming out to speak. We appreciate your feedback. It's very appreciated.
If I may, may I take a couple minutes to thank you about the period?
They're leaving. We're good. We're good.
I just wanted to take a minute and thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's very appreciated, and we've definitely heard you, so thank you.
Fiat, there you go. What, and just make tennis courts everywhere out there? Yeah, okay. Just leave my house, I like that. Maybe my deck is fixed this summer. No, there's 68. Just be great one time. Oh, your mom's here. She's. Yeah. Dad's my friend. Will never. I absolutely love her yellow.
I think that's the duty of the police chief, but we'll send a guy there.
You guys subcontracting your crowd control at Public Works?
All right. We will now move on to appointments. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. First board is the Affordable Housing Loan Committee. Councilmember Blackburn, I would like to appoint Beth B.
Second.
All right, is that a, that's a direct one, right? That's a direct one. Okay, so motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels.
Which seat? I mean, which one of those seats?
I mean, either one. Do you mind, yeah, I'll just check with the staff liaison and see which one would be best appropriate. Right.
Okay. All right, motion's been made. Properly signed, all those in favor say aye. Anybody?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
Girl, we're voting.
Congratulations, Ms. B.
Yes. Okay, next is the Environmental Advisory Commission. Councilmember Blackburn?
I am looking, and specifically, I would just like to let the community know, I'm specifically looking for developers, minority and women developers. We got, we've got to get some different and diverse voices on the EAC. Those positions have been open for a while, because I really want to make sure that EAC is diverse.
Yeah, one person is eligible for reappointment.
Oh, and Jeff, okay, thank you. Yeah, but I just, I want to let the community know that that's something that's really, really important. So if you have an interest in the environment, and you're a developer or in the construction business, please get in touch with me or with Valerie, and we'd like to get you on the EAC. I do have an appointment that's for Jeff McKinnon, so I'd like to reappoint him.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
Congratulations, Mr. McKinnon.
Next is the Housing Authority Appointment, but I will bring that back to you next month. They are still figuring out the Residence Council seat. Okay. Next is the Human Relations Council, Mayor Vertem Glover.
Continue.
Okay. Next is the Multimodal Transportation Commission, and that is for Councilmember Robinson, but he's not here, so we'll pick that up next month. Next is the Police Community Relations Committee, and that is a direct appointment. Councilmember Blackburn?
I'd like to appoint Rosemary Johnson.
Congratulations, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. And finally, we have the Youth Council, Mayor Vertem Glover.
Continue.
All right, and that concludes the appointments. Mayor Conley?
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda includes the following items. Item three is agreement with Tyler Technologies for support services and updates from Eunice. Item four is the authorization for the police department to submit a cops office grant application. Item five is the acceptance of a voucher from the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program for local governments to use for technical assistance and/or equipment rebates. And item six is a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of an installment financing agreement, security agreement, and related documents in connection with the financing of public safety radios and communications equipment for the City of Greenville, North Carolina.
Councilmember Blackburn?
If the council will agree, I'd like to have item number five pulled from the consent agenda.
Move to approve the remaining items.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
We will move on to item number five. Madam Manager?
Thank you. Item five is the acceptance of a voucher from the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program for local governments to use for technical assistance and/or equipment rebates. Public Works Director Kevin Mulligan is available for any questions.
Good afternoon, Councilmember.
Good afternoon, good evening. Well, I'm going to just start, you know, kind of with the basics. Is this rebates for City of Greenville municipal purchases, or is this something that's open for the community?
This is for municipal.
Okay. So what this, can you tell me how much this is for?
$146,850. This is from the, let's see, this is part of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act.
Okay, perfect. And I don't know if you already have plans, if the city already has plans for it, but this is really exciting, because it sounds to me like this is basically almost $150,000 to help us have newer, more modern, more energy-efficient, cleaner, less carbon footprint with our equipment. Do I have that right?
That's right. This is for our building management system for many of the city buildings, and it's part of the Schneider contract we embarked on about nine years ago. And this is replacing some of the equipment that is outdated, and at times when the equipment, which is no longer supported, when a part breaks, we have a very difficult time getting that fixed, and there's a delay, it could be a significant delay, in returning our buildings back to automation. So, you know, we would have to leave this facility on, either bring someone in, or it would stay on cooling overnight, or if it happens during the middle of the day, obviously, we have to go to manual mode, which is, which is not as cost-effective.
So this is almost kind of like the, like the heat pump concept, as well as timed HVAC?
Yes, exactly. So again, our building management system is controlling our HVAC system, is the primary function of it, and this will be operating in a much more effective way, and to another degree, IT has been on us. This is an old outdated language. Where we're going with these newer pieces of equipment is much more secure.
So is there any possibility for a couple of solar panels on City Hall with this?
Not within this current allotment of funding. If there's additional funding, we could certainly look into that.
Okay, fantastic. This is really exciting. I'm really glad to hear this. I think what will happen is that it sounds to me like we'll have better management of heating and cooling, and also, Les, do we have any idea how much we might reduce our carbon footprint using these more modern, more efficient?
I don't have that calculation. Really where it comes, it's from a security perspective, this is much more secure, much more efficient. If something breaks down, our existing equipment, which is managing our infrastructure, is outdated, right? And we can't continue to get parts for it, and therein lie some of the problems and some of the weakness of that system.
So this is a win-win.
It is, for sure.
The old stuff wasn't working that well, we're getting nice new stuff that's going to work and be very efficient.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your explaining that, Mr. Mulligan, and with that, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Smiley. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to new business, which is the public hearings. This is the policy of the public hearings adopted by the City Council. The petitioner or representative of the petitioner and a leader of those in opposition will have, each have 10 minutes. Persons following them will have up to three minutes each, with a total for each side of no more than 30 minutes. Additionally, I want to remind those in attendance to extend the courtesy to persons speaking during the public hearing and to the City Council during discussions. Comments made by Comments made by members of the public are to occur only during the public hearing as allowed by the mayor in accordance with adopted policy of the City Council. There should be no interruptions of speakers or of council members, including expressions of support or disagreements verbally or by applause, as this is distracting and makes discussion difficult. We ask for your cooperation. Thank you. Madam Manager, our first public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. The first public hearing is an ordinance to annex Abigail Trails Phase One property involving twelve point two-two-seven-seven acres located along the eastern right-of-way of Frog Level Road roughly between Wayne Wright Lane and Megan Drive. Chris Kelly, Planner One with the Planning Department, has the presentation. Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the southwest quadrant of the city. More specifically, this property is on the eastern right-of-way of Frog Level Road roughly between West Star Street and Megan Drive. Located in the Swift Creek, Swift Creek watershed, it will require twenty-five year detention. It is also located in a primary service area on the tiered growth map and is located in City Council Voting District Number Two. Anticipated development for this annexation is twenty-eight two-family lots with an anticipated tax value of nine point eight million dollars. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, any questions, first half?
I have four questions in three parts. This is your first day, I really wanted to...
Shante's giving you the look of death right now. Stop it. She says, "Stop it."
I guess we'll hear more during the people speaking for and against, so I'll just wait. I'll hold my questions.
Okay, thank you very much.
And then I'll have three-part questions and...
You're not booked yet. All right, the public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. All right, seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none, the public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Blackburn?
Just a question. I see these nice big parcels, and they're called Abigail Trails. Is this gonna be trails, or what, do we know what's going there? Won't affect the, the ability to vote, but...
The submitted plans are for two-family lots, so duplexes.
Okay. And do we know how many?
Uh, tw- twenty-eight.
Total?
Total.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Move to approve.
Second?
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes for zero.
We'll move on to number eight. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is an ordinance to annex Arbor Hill South Section Two, Phases Ten and Eleven, for a portion of property involving nine point nine-three-oh-four acres located along the northern right-of-way of LT Hardy Road at the current termini of Oleander and Plymouth Drive. Again, Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the southeast quadrant of the city. This property is located on the northern right-of-way of LT Hardy Road, uh, at the current termini of Oleander and Plymouth Drive. This property is located in the Hardy Creek watershed. It is also located in the primary service area on the tiered growth map and will be located in City Council Voting District Number Four. Anticipated development for this site is thirty-four single-family lots with an anticipated tax value of seven point one-four million dollars. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Smiley?
What's the retention requirements for the Hardy Creek watershed?
Uh, that'll be answered later in the site plan process?
I mean, but in the, in the watershed, there is a...
Ten years.
Oh, my apologies.
Shante's giving you a hand signal over there.
It is not located in the twenty-five-year detention.
Okay, so it's the default, which is...
Ten.
Ten years, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Side of a friend.
She's bone friend, yeah.
Any other questions? Councilmember Blackburn?
I have some questions. Can someone, perhaps, if you have a slide, show me, we've done, we've had a lot of new development over here that has been approved, and a lot of folks living in that area have been concerned about it. Is there a, a, a larger shot of this? Where I can, where we can just get an idea? Um, I, I think, you know, I, I think as our city grows, I absolutely believe it's, it's good for us to, to annex. I'm concerned about, you know, more growth in this area where, you know, there's, there's, there's been concerns about that.
What, what other map? I think that this is part of the presentation would be the only map that's out here. Councilmember Blackburn, is there additional information you would need, and if you would, we are happy to bring that to you at another, to send that to you offline or bring that to you at another meeting?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna support the annexation. I just know that we have, you know, with like, the Lake Glenwood folks, I know we've had rezonings over in this area, and I'm trying to put them all together.
So would you like us to provide a map with, with that information on it?
I, I would like that. I'm gonna, I'm gonna support the annexation, but I, it'd be nice to, I'd like to see that tonight, but we don't have that tonight, is that what I'm hearing?
We do not have that tonight, but we're happy to pull that together.
Yeah, let's do that. I would like to see that.
So you would like to see, just to come make sure that I understand, you would like to see annexations and rezonings in that, that LT Hardy area. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, because what is this, what's the zoning gonna be here? Do we know?
This property is currently zoned RA twenty.
So it hasn't been rezoned yet for its potential use? Well, it could've been rezoned if it was on ETJ, so, so we're annexing, but we're not discussing the zoning.
Correct. This is simply an annexation.
Rezoning to come, I'm sure.
No.
It's zoned for single-family.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. RA twenty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, 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 okay.
So, so Councilmember Blackburn, um, per your request, we will put together a map showing annexations and rezonings in the area.
I would, I would definitely like that. So this is... Oh, last could say today? Um, no, they, yeah, um, I, I think this recent, like, last year or so.
Last year?
Last year.
Okay, we're happy to pull that together.
So if I understand correctly, this is already zoned RA twenty, and this is gonna be single-family homes. There's not, I know anything can happen, but there's not at present, uh, uh, an accompanying rezoning request, or you don't foresee one?
Currently, no, ma'am.
Read, looking in your crystal ball, I know you've got one.
I don't think, I don't think that that is actually fair to ask the staff to look into the crystal ball regarding any future annex, any future rezonings. I think what staff has indicated, that it is currently zoned RA twenty, that RA twenty would provide for the development that is, that is adjacent to that site. Is that correct, Mr. Kelly and Ms.?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Gooby?
Yes.
Yeah, and I didn't mean, I'm, I'm not saying predict the future, but you might, it may be that you already had one, for instance, that had already come to your office that we would be looking at next month. That was really what I meant.
Right, we have not, uh, uh, Ms. Gooby, Mr. Kelly, we do not have any additional rezoning request on this site.
No, ma'am, we do not.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. All right, well, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes for zero.
All right, we'll move on to item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is an ordinance to annex Covington Downs Subdivision Block G, Lots Four A, Four B, and Four C, involving two point zero-one-six acres located along the northern right-of-way of East Fire Tower Road and six hundred and fifty feet west of East Arlington Boulevard. Again, Mr. Kelly?
This property is located in the southeast quadrant of the city. More specifically, located along the northern right-of-way of East Fire Tower Road roughly six hundred and fifty feet west of East Arlington Boulevard. This property is located in Fork Swamp Watershed. It will require twenty-five-year detention. Uh, it is located in a preferred service growth area, preferred growth area on the tiered growth map, and will be located in City Council Voting District Number Four. Anticipated development is one oil change store and one car wash with an anticipated tax value of three point five million.
All right, any questions? Councilmember Blackburn?
Shock. Is this, and I'm trying to place it on the map, is this that area that has been kinda completely surrounded by the city with time that just never was annexed? Do I have that right? Or is this actually kinda more a growth area? I mean, it's on Fire Tower, but it's also, there's Wimbledon, so I'm just, there was kind of an area in there that had never been annexed, kind of around Arlington and...
Right, so, I, I think, um, I'm gonna help Mr. Kelly out a little bit. Everything in green is in the city limits. The red is, it would have been a, a donut hole, would have been a parcel of land that was not in the city limits, and with this act, with this action of the council, that section in red will come into the city.
And these other up here that are not in green, those are still outside the city limits?
That is correct. Those are still outside the city limits.
Yeah, that gets it what, 'cause it's, it's odd that we have these kinda donut hole areas, and so it's good to see them coming into the city. So, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion.
To approve?
Second.
All right, motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes for zero.
All right, we'll move on to item number ten. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item ten is an ordinance requested by Woda Cooper Development, Inc. to rezone two point eight-nine acres located along the southern right-of-way of West Arlington Boulevard and three hundred and fifty feet west of Evan Street from general commercial to office residential. The Chief Planner, Shante Gooby, has the presentation. Ms. Gooby?
Good evening.
Welcome back.
I'm always gonna be here, right?
What if we like the other guy?
This property is centrally located in the city. It's located along the southern right-of-way of Western, uh, West Arlington Boulevard. Um, it's between the railroad tracks and Evan Street, so diagonally across the street, this is J.H. Rose High School. This is a photograph of the property, so to the left would be Evan Street. This property is located in the Greens Mill Run watershed. It will require twenty-five-year detention and nitrogen and phosphorus reduction. There's a portion of the property that's in a special flood hazard area, which is shown in blue. There are jurisdictional streams and buffers and potentially wetlands. Uh, due to, due to the change in zoning from commercial to multifamily, this rezoning could actually generate a net decrease of about eighteen hundred trips along, along Arlington Boulevard. This property is currently zoned CG, so it could yield a convenience store, and under the requested zoning, which is OR, it could, uh, it could yield approximately forty multifamily units. Also, just point out to you that there's actually a portion of the property that is already OR, so it's sort of this blue that goes around it. So this rezoning is gonna result in the entire parcel being zoned OR. The Future Land Use Plan map recommends, uh, high-density residential between the railroad tracks and Greens Mill Run, so the requested OR zoning is part of that land use character. In staff's opinion, the request is in compliance with the Horizon's plan and Future Land Use Plan map. Staff recommends approval, and at the March twenty-first P&amp;Z meeting, um, P&amp;Z did unanimously recommend approval of the request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Gooby? Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Protem Glover. Um, my name is Bruce Watson, Vice President of Development for Woda Cooper Companies and Chief Diversity Officer. It's indeed a pleasure to be here before you all today. Um, we have one development in your city already, um, and we'd like to have another development, um, that you all would approve for the rezoning tonight. Our company, we have over four hundred properties in the United States. We have nineteen in the state of North Carolina, and that's a, a testimony to the state of North Carolina supporting affordable housing. I, I say every day, everybody deserves to live in a nice place. And what we build, we would all live in, and it's affordable because of the rents that we charge and getting, um, the tax credit. So, I'm willing to answer any questions you have. These are one, two, and three bedrooms. We have amenities like a computer room, we have a fitness center, we have a laundry facility, um, and we look forward hopefully to doing another project in the great city of Greensville, North Carolina.
All right.
Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
You have a great city. I'm a tennis player myself, and I'll leave it at that. You can tell, it's not quite the way it used to be.
You better be careful, you got a public hearing tonight.
I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has ten minutes, all others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion. Councilmember Blackburn?
Motion to approve?
Second.
And I'd just like to say that this is really exciting, to see this development. It's in the central city where folks can get out on our greenway, and, um, you know, it, it's, it's where we want housing to be, and it's affordable, so this is really good news. So, glad to support this request.
All right, thank you very much. Motion has been properly made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember, Mayor Protem Glover. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes for zero.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to item number eleven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eleven is an ordinance request, requiring the demolition and removal of the dwelling located at nine oh-two-two Ward Street, known as Tax Parcel Zero-Six-Seven-Two-Two, and Code Enforcement Supervisor Sylvia Brown has that presentation. Ms. Brown?
Before we begin, I have a question. Are we gonna vote on the demolition, or are we receiving an update on, at the request that we requested, like, about nine months ago?
Right, so just to, just to be clear, this, an item when it was originally brought to the council in September was to consider an ordinance for the demolition of the dwelling unit.
Correct.
The council provided a six-month period, and what we're doing is providing a report The council provided a six-month period, and what we're doing is providing a report back. At the conclusion of that, if the council would like to move forward with the demolition, that's certainly the prerogative of the council.
Okay.
If the council wants to provide some additional time, that's the prerogative of the council. Staff is prepared at this point to provide you all with the update, and then at that point, it's the council's decision to decide how to move forward.
Okay, thank you.
And before, when you're doing your presentation, help me, but can, will you remind us kind of the background of it before you talk about the update?
Yes, ma'am.
Or could you please?
Right, I think all of that's included in the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wall.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
On September the 8th of last year, council received also a presentation of this property, 902 Ward Street. At that meeting, a motion was made to table the item and give the homeowner 180 days to make improvements, and so we're, we are back before you tonight. The 180 days ended on March the 8th of this year. Currently, the tax value is totaled at $136,000, $136,434, with currently 2,022 taxes delinquent of $1,113.80. The estimated cost to repair is $157,701.8, and the property has also been vacant and without utilities for over five years. Here is a general timeline of the property, 902 Ward Street. The case was opened in June of last year. There was an initial inspection, as well as proper mailings and contacting the owner as we are required to do in August. September is when the initial public hearing occurred. As was mentioned, in that meeting, council gave the homeowner 180-day extension. September, we provide, the staff provided the homeowner with some information, as was directed by the council to staff to do, and we'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a few seconds. In November, as, there were two exterior inspections made. Also, in December, there was an exterior, as well as an interior inspection with the homeowner present. In January, there were, in January and February, there were some routine patrols, and what that means is the code enforcement officer was in the area and just made an exterior view of the property at that time. March the 6th, we were able to inspect the interior, as well as the exterior of the property, with the owner present. And then in March the 10th of this year, we met with the owner at city offices, the municipal building, and at that meeting, the owner advised staff that he would need anywhere from six to 12 months to continue the progress. March the 13th, staff was also able to inspect the interior and exterior with the owner present, and then some additional inspections occurred, some routine and some with the owner without. March the 30th, the code enforcement officer met with the owner outside, but was unable to inspect the property at that time. Most recent contact has been April the 4th, when the owner contacted code enforcement and requested an inspection. September the 22nd, code enforcement supplied the owner, as I mentioned previously, with information from the Housing Division related to programs that are offered by them, the inspections division guidelines, as well as minimum housing ordinances. And the owner acknowledged receipt of that information by signature, by his signature. In December of last year, a reinspection was done by the code enforcement officer, who was accompanied by the Chief Building Inspector. The owner was present and gave staff full access. March the 6th, staff met with, met and discussed next steps. It was re-inspected by staff again, and the inspection results included, we noticed that there were significant number of violations still existing. Some work had been done, but maybe not done correctly. Some work may have been covered up without being inspected, and so we scheduled a meeting with the owner to come in and see staff on March the 10th. March the 10th, which correlates with your, the deadline of the 180 days, staff met with the owner at the municipal building, and at that time is when the owner advised staff in writing that he would need six additional months. And during the meeting, he advised us verbally that he would need a year, 12 months. He signed a consent for follow-up inspections, but later rescinded that consent, and staff advised the owner to get proper permits and request regular inspections of all of the work. Staff conclusions to date are that the owner only has building permit, only has a building permit, no electrical, mechanical, or plumbing. Work performed was informally evaluated and will likely require some demo, possibly removal of window siding, sheetrock, and other items, and that there's been little to no progress with significant repairs still needed. These pictures are pictures that you viewed at your September 8th meeting, and so I'll skim through those quickly. And we have additional pictures as well. These pictures are from November the 10th, and I believe the code enforcement officer was only to view, only able to view the exterior of the property. Here again, in December the 20th of last year, we got some interior inspection done. And then finally, April the 4th, which is, has been our most recent contact. These are the options that staff is presenting to council tonight. First of all, you do have the option to approve the ordinance requiring the demolition and removal of the property at 902 Ward Street. And secondly, extending, if you decide to extend additional time to the owner, staff is requesting that the following milestones be achieved by the owner. We're asking that the owner provide a written construction timeline to show benchmark dates of progress within two weeks of tonight's meeting, and this diagram here is just an example of what that might look like. Provide detailed written cost estimates for the construction to include labor and materials, also within two weeks of tonight's meeting. Allow staff to post the property with signage indicating that the dwelling is not habitable and is unsafe during the construction time, as well as to obtain all trade permits, as mentioned before. Currently, he does not have plumbing, electrical, or mechanical. Give staff full access without having to obtain an administrative inspection warrant, allowing the code enforcement officer weekly access and the building inspector into the structure for at least, at least two-week intervals until fully complete with the construction. The owner must pass associated inspections in order before covering and moving to the next phase of construction. We're asking that the owner keep the worksite and grounds clean during the construction process, removing all trash and debris. Communicate with staff at least once a week concerning his progress, any questions or problems or issues that he may encounter during this process, and asking that the owner show proof of financing to make the required repairs to bring the property up to code. Finally, the owner, we're asking to enter into a signed agreement with the city outlining the above-listed milestones, and that the owner will meet these milestones in timely fashion. And then if the owner fails to meet these requirements, staff will come before council again, asking and seeking additional guidance. Staff is here tonight to answer any questions that you might have. I have with me the code enforcement officer, Antoine Whitney, as well as, as well as the Chief Building Inspector, William Mills, to answer any questions you might have.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Oh, you got questions? Go ahead. Are you sure? I'll still ask. Okay. Hey, thank you for that detailed update. Really appreciate it. Really appreciate all the work that you and staff have done. I'm curious, with the stipulations that would, would be required for this property owner to have that extension, are there any other properties where folks are doing reconstruction repairs, where there's that kind of stipulations? For instance, where you could just enter any time without your permit or your, what's called administrative warrant?
I don't know if we have any currently, but I'm sure Chief Building Inspector, William Mills, could attest to the fact that during a construction period, there are times when the building inspector does have to make inspections as the process is going forward.
So, there are, but they're not currently situations where there's construction taking place or repair taking place, where someone can just, a code enforcement officer can, or a building inspector can just kind of come and go without announcing that they're coming?
I believe this may have been, this has been added because staff has noticed the times that we've been allowed in, inside the property, staff has noticed that some work is covered up in some electrical work, and it hasn't been inspected to make sure that it was installed properly, and so that may, that's one of the reasons why that stipulation was added.
So, there's some concern that perhaps something's being covered up before you get there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, that's definitely a concern. As far as milestones, I, at some point, I'd like to see all these milestones, I, I, just to see the list of them. Do you, do you have anybody else with those kinds of milestones and stipulations right now, working under all of those stipulations? That intensity or that degree of stipulations?
Not that I know of, and again, I believe this came about because we noticed, staff noticed that work was being done without proper inspections, and our concern is that some of the work may not be done properly, and so we want to, we have a duty to keep the community safe, and if, for example, wiring is installed improperly, and then the electricity is turned on, it may be a fire hazard, and so that's why the inspections are required prior to building material being added and put in to cover or to, you know, prevent proper inspection.
I absolutely agree you want it to be safe, and I saw those wire boxes, they were, you know, I'm not a professional, but looked like there may be some work, and I know you said that the trade permits had not been obtained, and that's, that's a concern for sure, as far as the stipulation. I think my concern is that, well, let's do the public hearing, and then I have some thoughts. Thank you very much for your presentation. That was very thorough.
Councilmember Blackburn, in response to your question, the owner in this case has already been given a six-month extension, and if he's given another extension, the city would want access to the property without having to get an administrative search warrant and go through all the hoops to get access to the property if he's gonna continue to get extensions, and the property is dilapidated, is unsafe.
Thank you.
You stated that we provided information for programs, housing programs?
Yes.
Does he qualify for any of those, or the majority of those have to be occupied?
Correct, yes, ma'am. At this time, he doesn't, as far as I know, qualify for any of those, because as you said, you have to be, the property has to be owner occupied, and this time, the property is not fit to be occupied.
Okay. I, I understand the inspections. I understand why that's necessary, and I guess we'll get to Mr. Jerome in a second. But I am concerned, so I, I go by there on a regular basis as well.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, I think that he's done some things that we didn't show, the fencing, that, you know, things like that. So, if we don't show those things, are they not of concern?
I don't believe the fence is of a major concern for us. It's the structure.
Right. Public, public, usually when they have the fence and, and the debris around the house, we consider that more public nuisance than minimum housing.
Okay. Okay.
All right, any other questions? Councilmember Protem Glover.
Can we hear from Mr., from the owner of the property?
Yeah, during, he can speak during the public hearing.
I know it's, it's, it's hard for somebody to understand all the rules and regulations of, of, you know, the city.
Yes, ma'am.
But they have to be, have to be a guideline somewhere where, of course, but when, when owner came before us, he did not have any money to even fix the house, and I think his sister helped him out, so.
Got another job.
And he got another job, and so he's working vigilantly, real hard to try to, to get the house in proper living condition. So, I don't think that, I don't think the city should be in the business of tearing down houses when people have already put money into it to fix it, and, and then I know that he's not, you've not been able to do the inspections like you should. That needs to be done, and I think the homeowner would know that. I don't know how much money he and his sister has already put in the house, but there are so many homeless people in our city that they took over our parts, and if there's any way that he can fix the house, I would not like to see it torn down. I think we need to give him a chance to fix the house, because, like I said, there are a lot of people who are homeless, and there's a lot of people who had property and it was torn down, so either by, by the, by the person who had it or, or whatever. But there are so many homeless people in this city, and to be hard on a homeowner who's trying to fix his house, which caught on fire, and also the lot next to him, where all the guys are hanging around, that, that, that lot is not his.
Right.
It, it belongs to someone else. And so, he shouldn't be, he should not be penalized for what those people do. I think the police department should step in and get rid of those people, send them away from there, because that's what the police department is for. So, and, and they're all making his property look bad by sitting there all day long, doing things, drinking and whatever, so. In my heart of hearts, I just don't want to see him lose his home, if he, if there's any way he can fix the home. And when he comes up, I'll talk to him.
All right. Councilmember Blackburn.
I just wanted to sort of echo what, I know we have a public hearing. I appreciate all the work that you all have done. I just kind of want to echo what Councilmember Mayor Protem Glover has said, and, and I know we will hear the pros and cons on this, but I, I do see some evidence of work, and as a homeowner myself, I, I don't, you know, there's a concept of deferred maintenance. It's hard enough sometimes.
Do you have any, do you have any questions for the staff?
No, I don't. I'm sorry, what's going on?
We can, we'll have discussions as soon as we finish up the public hearing. All right, any other questions for our staff? All right. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant, they may, may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Don't know who I am, I'm Jerome Wilson. I'm the owner of property on 902 Ward Street. I saw y'all six months ago. I was a lot less grateful, but the hard work and the continuous and the support of my family, I'm back here today. What they said, partially true. I was working hard, I was putting things together, but of course, Mr. Mills, who's the building inspector, he stopped me on two occasions. One occasion, he said, "You better take care of the outside." But he's the building inspector, I didn't know the building inspector was running the whole show, so I went and I put my fence up, cleaned up the outside, but even with the building permit, when I'm tearing up, I got the cleanup. Now, if you got a code enforcement, that's the cleanup, that's the code part, but if you got a building permit and you tearing up and you putting stuff together, they conflict of interest is right there. You cleaning up and you fixing up, and by the time you get through, you gotta clean up, and then you go back, you put your tools, and you go back to work. He posted, got me a list. He said he sent it to the email, but everybody know, Mr. Whitley, he see me every day, but we had that meeting, he said, "Jerome, I'm gonna get the list to you," but that's after my building permit has been expired. When you, they showed you all these bad pictures, they ain't show you no good pictures. When they said they going in there, you shut me down, you know, I'm tired, disgusted. I got a team ready to go to work, and, and I can't get the proper A-OK, because they were throwing and tripping me up. But I'ma walk with it, and I'ma keep on, because I had 20 years to pay for my home. Somebody burned it down, I put it back together, all right? Now, time is to get by close for me to retire and move in. Now, they want to come and tear my house down again. But if they do, I don't know how I'm gonna build, I'm gonna build it back. I don't know how, but the only thing I can tell y'all is I'm working hard on my house. They show you all the bad pictures. They show you all the bad pictures. They ain't show you nothing good. I ain't covering up nothing. When I tell you you got open access to my home, until you give me a reason not to, anybody can walk through that door. And when you have, and I work in the medical field. If you walk into surgery and you see all the blood and guts laying around, you're gonna say this can't be done. But after you clean up, sew up, and put that person back together and send them home and they say, thank you for what you've done, then you could see it. But right now, they can't see because they don't want me to succeed. I'm being tripped up. And I know I am. And I'm just asking, you see in y'all hands now, but y'all see who I am. And one time, it was just, it was just some paper and writing. But now you see my face. And this is, it's horrible to work hard for someone, someone just come like, put a gun to you and just rob you. And all you had just been taken away. So.
Well, don't go anywhere. Because I've got something to say. So I see you quite a bit. I stopped by, I check on you.
Thank you.
Right?
Yes.
To make sure things are going smoothly. Because it is your home and we want you to keep your home. And I know it appears to you right now that people don't want you to succeed, but checking on you as you go through the process means that they actually do want you to succeed. So if, if, if our inspectors come to your home and say the electrical is come, is covered up, right? You've had a fire one time. Nobody wants to see that again. I also understand your amount of mistrust for people. I, I understand that. Which is why I stopped by on a regular basis to check on you. But we have to do this the right way so you can have your forever home.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? You've made some great progress. I've seen how hard you've been working. I've seen you grab people. But remember, some work has to be done by licensed professionals.
Yes, ma'am.
And so once those individuals, let me ask you this. You've seen the things that they're requiring of you.
Ma'am, I didn't.
You, you saw what they, what.
Yes, ma'am. I saw.
Okay, so, but can you do some of those things? Can you allow them in the home? Can you allow the inspections, those things, so that you won't have to repeat it? That, that's the only reason for them. It's not, you know, for you to fail. It's not for you to not have your home. It's so you won't be wasting money that you've already spent and then you have to repeat this all over again. I've seen you get a second job, you know, and, and give up your place of residence where you were living. So I know that you are doing the work. But to continue to do that work, we have to do it the right way. I've spoke with one of the gentlemen. I can come with them if the trust is the issue, but know this, I don't know what they know. I'm not a contractor. I'm not an electrician. It would just be for your peace of mind.
Yes, ma'am. And, and if it's okay, I would like to request for my contractor to be there and for my people to be there. Because it was very intimidating to go and sit down in this meeting. When they knew, Mr. Mills said, I did not know that there was going to be another person coming 30 minutes ahead of time. And just for me to sit down, do the intimidation, then I had to sign some paper that I retracted because right now, like I tell you, my paranoia is the stereotype. And I've been able to stay this close. And the only thing I feel is the way as a black man left that they could do is plant drugs in there and then my house would be considered to be used as a dwelling that sell drugs. If you and Mr. Glover, y'all see what I'm be up against. And this is not, the, the tearing down of the house, it, it helps me with a little bit of, you know, they gotta move somewhere else. The quietness is beginning to come. The music that you hear over there is not always horrible anymore. And I've seen little children back over there dancing. And these are the things, and the gentleman that helped me putting up my plank, this man got stageful cancer. He said, I want to put a plank on your wall. Instead of him going and spending time just fanning, he won't come help me. So it's bigger than me right now and not.
So are you saying you have licensed contractors, you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
If there was one here today, he was with me. For a matter of fact, he said he know the mayor, Mr. Timothy Cherry. He, he was sitting out there, coming to give me support.
Okay.
And there's people in my corner, and I can do this. And I know what you're saying. I know, I'm not, the door is open. I'm not coming up anything. You see the wires and stuff, nothing is covered up. I leave wires and stuff open. That's how come y'all saw all these horrible pictures. Because when y'all come in, I think of you coming in, thinking, go ahead on and go to work. And you take all these pictures and then you show all the bad pictures here. And you ain't said, they did not show near good pieces. And y'all been in there. There is some good stuff in there.
There is.
So see, that's what I'm saying. They're building a case for what? I want to work with y'all. I ain't want to be nobody in there. I want to be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. And I'm doing the best I can. But sometimes at the age, I have to slow down. I have to take a breather and, and you know, spend a little time with my family and let them know I still love them and I'm around. But I got to put my energy elsewhere for the time being. So like I said, that's where I'm at. You know, I'm not here to say that what they're doing is not right. What I'm trying to say is I'm working with you, but you gonna tell me you got a list for me and I'm on a time limit. And you take your time to get me a list and say, I'll put it in your email. But you can come to my house whenever you want to. Mr. Whitley pass by there every day. We friends. So I'm just saying, I don't know why it's such a big problem and why some of the good pictures wasn't shown. But see, y'all know what I'm doing. So I leave it like that.
And we do. Where's Ms. Brown? Is it possible to have?
Yeah, I mean, do you have any questions for?
Yeah.
Your owner?
Go ahead.
You got any other que, anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that in the shape your house is because it was burned and probably drug dealers set it on fire. Or drug smoking people or whatever set it on fire. And, you know, I have a heart. And my heart, I feel that, you know, we should give you enough time. Abiding by the rules of our inspection people and all that, we should give you enough time. If it takes a year to fix your house, then you should get a year. Because that is your home. And you didn't burn it down, some, tried to burn it down, some. Drug dealers did, drug people did that. I don't know if there were dealers or if they were just sitting around. You know, that's the problem we have in this city. They can sit anywhere and do anything and as long as it's not in a certain part of town, they can do anything in West Cleveland. So I really want to, I really want to allow you to continue on your home with, you know, and working with the inspection people. Do you have a phone number that they can call you?
I gave contact, they got it.
Okay.
Because they, when things are wrong, I call them. They don't have to call me.
Okay. So what you'll have to do is what you've already done, let them come in and inspect it. And then start from there and try to get your home put back together. Because, you know, I grew up very, very poor. And we didn't have a home. We just live wherever. So I understand your plight. And I think it's, it behooves us to listen sometimes and to give people the opportunity to fix what they have.
Any other questions?
I think too, it's important to know that once everyone inspects and the process goes along and you're able to move back in the home because you can't live in it right now, for your safety, okay? Then once it's owner occupied, you can apply for those grants. So it, it's a process. It's been a long one, but you'll get there. You'll get there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for the homeowner? Mr. Wilson?
I guess I have a question. Would you, do you feel that you have the freedom and the ability, when you have meetings with city staff members, to bring your folks you're working with or family members so that you don't feel like you're alone? Is that something that you would feel comfortable doing?
Yeah, I would have done that at that time if I knew I was going to be ambushed, but I didn't. I normally have people around me to make me feel comfortable. That's what it's all about. Even working with them, I want them to feel comfortable. Sometime I can tell when they're not comfortable. And I can tell when the ride of people next door, when people come, they, you know, their natives get restless and then I can tell there's something there, I don't know what, but I can tell it.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello to you all.
Hello.
I am Juanita Bryant Ross. I'm the sister of Jerome Wilson. And I'm here just to support him and thank you for the time that you have given us to try to get this home together. And I appreciate you, if you're giving more time, give us more time. Because like, like you said, the house being burned down before, it wasn't electrical, it wasn't fire, it was someone. And we know who it was that set it afire. It was paid to set it afire. But trying to come back from a fire is hard, but we're doing the best we can. So now with the work that's already done, I want to be clear when I walk out from here, we want that work to be torn out and somebody has to come and inspect it? Or we have a, we have a licensed electrician? Regardless how that panel box look, that electrician, that wire was run, was, was ran the right way. But we have one out now that's going to change that box out. Put the box on the outside, do what has to be done. The plumbing has been done, it's capped off. And when time, when you get the electrical done, then we can have all of it turned on. And I'm saying to you all, if you allow us to go ahead and do what needs to be done to get it livable, because like I said, it's his home. And right now, he is homeless. He's homeless in a sense because he's not able to live in his home. My door is always open because I'm his sister. But the thing about it is, no man wants to, a real man would have to live off someone else when they got a home of their own. And we're doing the best we can. But I just want to know, and I'm asking you in good faith, to tell me, I saw it up there on that board, but I want to hear somebody tell me, do we need to go in and tear out what was in there before? That's, that's in there now. Tear it out because as you said, you've come by, you've seen that there are walls that are good walls. There are things that, everything may not look good. But if you work from inside and you're told, stop doing what you're doing, I need you to go outside. What are we supposed to do? Stop and go outside. Trying to obey orders. Trying to do it the right way. So I'm here to support him. And whatever you all from this point say, if you're allowing us to go ahead and continue to do the repairs, does the repair, the wires that are being ran, do, do they need to be tear out? I mean, torn out and put back to give you the satisfaction that you need? Because right now, God is bigger than all of this. He's bigger than all of this. So either tell me what's going on right now, what, and what we needs to do, what we need to do at this point. So that we can do it to suit all of you guys. Everybody's concerned, do it, do it your way. We was here before, we were only talking about the downstairs being livable, not the downstairs and the upstairs at the same time. And majority of the pictures that were shown is from the upstairs, not the downstairs. So like I said, when we left from here before, we thought we only had to get that downstairs because it's actually a two-part building that was pulled together. So once we finished the downstairs, it has nothing to do with upstairs because that, that's ran on the, I mean, it ran through the same box. But nevertheless, you, he can live in one part and still be fixed on the other part. So am I, am I to understand that that's what can, what can be done? So my question to all of you, at this point, I need to know exactly what needs to be done. I saw it written up there, but I, I need you to tell me because I'm a verbal, when I'm reading some things, it doesn't come to me like it's supposed to, like it come to you all. But nevertheless, I still can comprehend. So I just want to hear.
That's time.
If we want to give me, give us more time, what needs to be done.
All right. Any questions?
Well, I just want her to know that we, we don't vote like right now. We, there's still some discussion that has to go on.
Okay, got the vote part, but I'm saying, what exactly, if, if we get this, what exactly we need to, do we need to tear out what's already there? That's what I want to know.
I think that's going to be a conversation that when they're meeting with your brother, that you may need to be present. Like we, we can't tell you because we don't know in our honesty. So we have to get through this section, this part first. And then staff will meet with him and let him know. Because you're saying something else has been repaired, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We're in the process of getting electrical, elec, electro, electrical work done. And so at this point, I'm thankful that the electrician got held up because that work would have been done before we got here. And I'm thankful that he got held up because I wouldn't have to tear that back up because that cost me a lot of money.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Okay, you'll be blessed.
All right. Thank you. You too. Anyone else would like to speak on behalf of the applicant, may come forward, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. All right. Seeing none, those in opposition to the applicant may come forward, please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Open for a board discussion or a motion. I would imagine we're having a discussion.
Yes. Okay. I guess Ms. Brown, just because I see you first. What are the possibilities that an appointment can be made prior to seeing Mr. Wilson's home and him having his licensed individuals there as well?
Yes, ma'am. We can, we can definitely do that.
You can do that? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So you, you want us, you want staff to meet with him and his sister prior?
What, so we're, we're going to follow up with him regardless?
Yes, ma'am.
So instead of just driving by one day and stopping, can we schedule an appointment, say, even if we do it prior to you leaving? So say Monday's the 17th. On the 17th, we'll be back on the 27th.
Yes, ma'am. So you're talking.
It'll work with Mr. Wilson to provide advance notice that we will be, would like to stop by and do either a code enforcement inspection. Typically, we will not do building code, electrical code, mechanical or plumbing until they call for an inspection. But certainly on the code enforcement side, we can provide advance notice.
But didn't that request, that he request, I mean, that we get something every, so often?
Right. I think when we made some suggestions to the council about what would help if we were to go forward with some sort of agreement between Mr. Wilson and the city, we would like to be, make sure that what happens is we're able to go into the house and do inspections and without an administrative warrant. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney? And so, but we are happy to provide advance notice to him of that.
Okay. You understand that, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, ma'am. She said. If you'd like.
I'm also concerned about code enforcement versus building inspections because I think that he made a really good point. When you're doing construction, you, you need to be able to make a mess and, you know, leave your stuff out. So, and then when the construction is done, then you can clean it all up. And, and, you know, I don't, I don't know if we're talking about code enforcement or building inspections with these interior.
Well, my, my perception was, don't do the whole house and then clean it up. Kind of clean as you go type thing.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's for your safety as well. Is that what you were?
Yeah. Okay. That makes sense.
Okay. So they're going to notify you when they're going to come to the home so that, one, you can be present and two, you can let them in.
Yes, ma'am.
They're also saying that for the plumber, the electric.
Mechanical.
You have to contact them. You have to call the city and say, these things are done. I need someone to come by and inspect.
Yes, ma'am. My. Yes, ma'am. Under normal circumstances, because I had to put this house back together. That's what we would normally do. Because the code would be, there would not be no code case because I am dirtying up the place. I am doing construction work. Once, whatever I'm preparing, once I get it done, I call and ask for an inspection. I let them see because I, before I was starting, that's why I went to try to get in touch with Mr. Mills first. So he can come in and look. And then, okay, Mr. Wilson, you're doing this. All right, that, and I'll get that done. And then I'll call you and you come and inspect. You saw it was open. Now, I know what I need to do. Now it's closed and that, that part is done. But see, now under this circumstances here, I can't tear up because I got to keep constantly cleaning up. So that's where the conflict of interest is. And when I do get things done, Mr. Mills, he was suggesting that I'm, he may have to come in once a week to do inspection. Some of them boys on probation don't go to the probation office but once a month. But I got to have them in there, I mean, once a week. By the time, it could take me a week to build something, you know? I keep, you keep coming and inspecting. Before it's done, it's going to look unfinished.
Well, and, and I think that they put that into consideration, but they just need to see the progress.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That, that's all. We just need to see the progress. Go ahead.
And oftentimes, our staff can provide assistance to a homeowner about repairs, if those repairs are not being built, done to code. So before somebody makes a significant amount of repair, they can come in and say, you know, what you really need to do is you need to do it this way because this is code and what you're doing now is not code. And so I think what our staff is trying to do, Mr. Wilson, and I understand that it may feel overwhelming, is they're trying to keep you on a path so that when you make those repairs, they're done correctly the first time and you don't have to replace that. You don't have to go back. So they're trying to help. I, 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 I just, I think Councilmember Daniels was to this point, and I think Councilmember Glover as well. We are trying to help you. It may not feel that way. I recognize that. But we are trying to help you to be able to make those repairs in your house, and we want to continue to do that. So I would encourage you to use our staff as a resource to help you understand what are the repairs that need to be done and how do those repairs need to be done.
So, and, and, and I'm sorry.
No, you.
In relation to the question, and you may or may not be able to answer this, but, so it was my impression, my understanding, that it would be the entire home, upstairs and downstairs. Is that what the city is looking at?
That's my understanding as well.
Okay.
But it was zoned at as an apartment. It was a A and a B. And I put a, because I needed me a place to sit. And I was really working on the A. And then I was going to get it together. And like I said, I could occupy, because that, that apartment would be straight and I would be able to have a place to live. And then I, as I'm there, I could go ahead on and do the work up there upstairs. And then I'm in.
So you have a home, but let me ask you this, and I don't know the answer to this, just so y'all know. If that home, if you call GUC, would they just give you electricity on the bottom part and not the top?
Yes, ma'am. I've already started looking into that, yes. I can, I can get the water turned on right now. There, it's in your code. It's like a homeowner can rewire his own home now. That's what the books say. I don't know. I was just following up your code. A homeowner can rewire his own home. But you can call and get an inspection, but you got to have a licensed person sign off on it. And then these type of things, yes, I'm aware of. And I'm not trying to stop these people from coming. Like I say, when I tell you my door open, it's open. But then until you give me a reason not to trust you, then I don't. And, and like I said, the stereotyping, there's only one thing left, and that's why my paranoia is there. And it ain't going nowhere.
Well, well, and, and I don't want you to be paranoid. I do want to support you on this.
Yes, ma'am.
And, but I also want you safe.
Yeah, and I understand that.
Okay, so that, that, yeah. So that's the reason the professionals need to be able to help you as you move forward.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the questions I had, was there a stipulation that referenced finances?
Yes, ma'am.
I, 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 I would not be able to support that stipulation just because I know that, and I may be wrong on this. Do we, do we have stipulations for other people doing home repairs where we ask them about their finances and ability to finance?
I think it's the amount that he spends on the lumber. Is that, what was the question? Can you go back some?
The, the stipulation was that Mr. Wilson would show us that he has some financial means to repair, to make at least 50% of the value of the repairs that are needed. And it's important to point out that we, that, that part of the reason that, that, that was suggested by staff, and I think the attorneys looked at some other jurisdictions who have this matter come up, is because this matter is a house that has been considered to be dilapidated and that without Mr. Wilson being here, the city would make a move to demolish that house. And so I think our intent with that was to just ensure that the homeowner had the ability to get that work done. If the council doesn't want that stipulation in, that's certainly the prerogative of the council. I will tell you that as we look at other jurisdictions, that is not an unusual requirement with other jurisdictions where it's, we're considering the demolition of dilapidated structures.
But I also think you have an individual here now who is just doing the best he can. And so I don't think it's, it behoves us to say, because you don't have, make this amount of money or you don't do this, we're not going to give you additional time. I've seen him get a part-time job and work and just grab people to help him out and things like that. So I, I'd like that removed.
Well, we can certainly, that's up to the prerogative of the council.
I agree. I could not support that stipulation. And Councilmember Daniels and Mayor Protim Glover, I would defer to you. But I think if, if we're, if the request has been made for a year, I think that's what we should consider as well.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Wilson, do you think you can get the house done within, within a year time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And you realize that the inspectors has to go in the house, okay? And I've been in there and I've seen some of the work you've done, and I was in there before you did the work. And it looks good, but you have to let the inspectors in to inspect your progress. Or you call them when you, when you're getting ready to do something, or if you have an electrician there to make sure that they are doing the right thing. It's kind of hard. It's, it, you know, I just don't want to see anybody homeless. And that's what you are now, if we're for your sister, and you have a house and you have been diligently trying to fix your house. So I think we need to work on, give you time. It may take, take you a year to finish your house, but at least you're trying. That's better than some, some other people are doing. Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion that we.
Did attorney have something?
Mayor and council, one thing to consider, this is a heavy lift. The, the staff report says it's like approximately $158,000 to bring the house up to code. Maybe a better approach would be to continue the case for one month and allow Mr. Wilson to meet with staff to see if we can enter into an agreement and bring that back to council, and then maybe give him a year from the date of the agreement. So it'll be very clear benchmarks of what he needs to accomplish. So, you know, we don't want to set him up for failure. He's putting money into the house and it still doesn't meet code. But if he has, if we can get an agreement in place where he knows what the expectations are, that, that might be a better path forward and bring it back. So staff can talk with Mr. Wilson, we can bring it back next month with an agreement in place possibly. Or if he's not willing to enter into an agreement, we can tell you that as well.
If, if, oh, you go ahead. I was just going to ask him if he understood what the attorney was saying.
Y'all know this last six months have been really rough on me. And now to come in a month, they just been in my house inspecting last week. It's just like, if you just take the shackles off me, I can finish my house. If y'all just take these shackles off me, I can go and finish my home. But there's studies of tripping me up, tripping me up. Now that I'm going to take time out of my schedule to make sure I come once a month, to make sure you, what you was asking me, to come in. And then you putting a price on it.
No, 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 that's not, he, he's saying the things that they requested, if you would go ahead and meet with staff, and then there'd be a signed agreement, and then the council would come back next month, in, within a month, and then we would make the decision.
I'm sorry, sir. I got you.
Does that, clear, okay. I just want to make sure you understood what he was saying.
I struggle with putting more impediments on this homeowner because what I've just heard him say is, I just want the time to get my house fixed. And I struggle with saying we're going to impose more impediments. We're going to give you a timeline. We're going to require this and that. And what happens if you don't get this staircase fixed by this amount of time? And somebody wants you to do this other thing. I, I feel like if we could just give Mr. Wilson the time to fix his house and of course do it up to code and have the trade, trade folks, the licensed trade professionals as required for your, for your safety. But, but, but really not to make this any more onerous than it already is. Just to give, to give the property owner the freedom that he needs to fix his house. That, that's what I would like to see. I'm willing to go along, Councilmember Daniels and Mayor Protim Glover, with what, how you see this. But I'd just like to give this gentleman the, the time to fix his house.
And I, I can understand that too, but you, you've got to understand there's got to be some type of benchmark too, right? There's got, you, you can't say that we're going to do this throughout the city and just say, we've got code enforcement in place. And as long as you're doing something, it's okay. You know, if you call code enforcement up because somebody is in violation, you're expecting them to remediate the, the issue, right, pretty immediately. So there's got to be something in place. There's, otherwise we, we don't need a code. We shouldn't have a code in our city. So, you know, from a safety standpoint, there has to be some type of benchmark moving forward. You know, I would think that sitting down, having a discussion with the staff and saying, hey, this is where we need to be. Anybody could be there, whoever's comfortable with, with Mr. Wilson, whoever's comfortable. The staff can sit down, have a discussion, come up with those benchmarks of how we can get to the point where we're moving forward. I think the intent of the council was that we're giving six months and we're going to go ahead and say that we're moving forward. And I think we're back here at the drawing board, and I don't think that the staff feels like that progress has been made, that we were discussed there. So I'm not saying that I don't think that you deserve more time. I think that there needs to be some benchmarks that need to be put up so we have a clear understanding of how we move forward. And if it takes you a year to get your house back in order, then we can figure out what those benchmarks are. You could be there. You could have any of your contractors there so they can ask the questions. The city staff can be there. They can answer the questions and discuss the process. But, you know, not have anything in place, then we're just basically hoping and we're going to come back here a year later and we'll probably be in the exact same situation. It's going to put you through more heartbreak and headaches of, of everything that's taking place.
I'm just saying, I can do this. But as long as people are going to be tripping me up and as long as there's going to be stuff. I can't even schedule work the way I need to because I'm going to have to keep things open because I may have to go. And I might have to come here or there. What I'm saying is, they didn't, they didn't show you the progress. You saw the picture, but there has been progress made. Whether it's a, a, a six months of progress, I wish I would have been living in my home and not sleeping on somebody's couch. But the situation, I, I have to do that. So right now, I'm saying is, if I could get turned loose, whereas I don't have to be looking over my shoulder worrying about all these things, I can put this house together. That's what I'm saying. I feel as though I've got handcuffs on me and I can't do nothing. Once I start doing one thing, then somebody else can point to me, where I'm going to send my money this way. I got to take time to evaluate which way I got to send the funds because I got to get the building inspector, but he can tell me, go and do this, stop, come back, go do that, stop. I'll get back with you. All these type of things that kills momentum. You lose money because you want to go do things and along you hold money to buy stuff with, it gradually leaves you. So I'm just saying, if you could just turn me loose, I can finish this house. The stipulation that the code people putting on me really should not be. Because if you turn me loose, now I clean up the yard. But now by fixing each side, I know how to call the building inspector to come in. I'll finish with this. I know how to do all these things. But unless you turn me loose and let me go and do it, then I, it going to be right here. You trip me up, I fall. I got to brush myself up and get up. That's time I lost.
So I, I think it's important to realize too, if we come back in a year and we're at the same place, and there are no guarantees that you're going to have the same counsel, in all honesty, we can't say, you know, you won't lose your home then. I think it's, I think it's important that you not look at it, that we're trying to trip you up, but that we're helping you have, helping you to climb up. That there's nothing, there's nobody in this room that wants you to fail at this point. And them coming, you know, it's like, it's like the teacher. You got to have tests as you go so they'll know that you're doing it right. So when they give you that degree and send you out into the world, that everything is okay and you've learned something along the way, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So allow people to help you. Allow people so you won't have to repeat and then waste money, and then your home will be built. You're, you're at a different place now than you were six months ago. You're going to be in a different place in 12 months than you are today. But you cannot do that alone. You have to allow people to help you. We were not designed to do life alone. We just weren't.
Mr. Wilson, that, that is the reason why we have inspectors. And because, you know, if we didn't have inspections, there'll be buildings all over town that wasn't.
Any kind of building.
You know, wasn't right for people to move in. And that is why we have an inspection department. And I think that if you can put, 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 put the past behind you and work with them when they come in to look, when they say they need to come in to look at something, then if you can work with them, Mr. Wilson, you have to, you have to work with them. Do you understand that?
Yes, ma'am.
You have to. And if you can do that, then, then you can go on and fix your house as you, as you want. But electricity, water, and all of that, it has to be approved, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Everything has to be approved by the inspectors. And then, and sometimes they may, I hope they're being nice to you when they come. But sometimes they may see something that needs to be done that you haven't done yet. So just be, just be patient with yourself, okay? That's, you got to start with you first. Be patient with yourself, that this can happen and you're going to do it. But you have to do it with the city's inspection department. You have to do it because if we didn't have inspectors, we'd have some bad-looking places in this city. We probably have got some already that people have just done and not even called any inspectors. But realizing that your house had, you know, was burned and that it needs to be repaired. So we, we will give you time to repair your house, but you have to work with code enforcement, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
And do you understand what they're saying? You have to make a list of everything that you're doing as you go? Not just talk to them, but also write it down so that everybody can see the progress that's being made, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
So, and I'll still come visit you.
I'm still going to come see you, Mr. Wilson.
You just have to do this.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just don't think it's, it's another way around it. But it's, it's going to be okay. And so we, so according to our attorney, and, and I'm in agreement, that you will meet with the staff and go over all these stipulations minus the income. And then we will bring this back to the council meeting with your agreement and staff's agreement to contact you prior. You know, just different things like that.
Yes, ma'am.
And then a decision will be made. Do you understand that?
Okay.
So I move that we table this matter for now and allow Mr. Wilson to meet with city staff, come up with an agreement, and then bring it back before the council in 30 days?
Why don't we do June? Why don't we do June since it's the end?
Okay, June.
It's almost the end of April.
Okay.
Because that'll give, that'll give Mr. Wilson and our staff time to.
First meeting in June.
Okay.
Yeah.
First meeting in June.
That'll give them plenty of time to go ahead and figure out who needs to be at the meeting, set up the meeting, talk about it. And then if they need to meet again, they can meet again.
He can bring whomever he would like.
Exactly, exactly.
So, and at our June meeting.
And I don't know if this needs to be part of the motion, but there was an issue of there's two, being two apartments. Could that be clarified? That, that seems like an important issue.
I think you said there's an A and a B in it.
Right. There was the two apartments. If, you know, if we're talking about more time, does it have, do both apartments have to be done? Or A and B, or is this the whole house?
That's probably something staff could work out.
Yeah, I'd just like to hear update on what that is, how that's going to be.
Okay. So we got a motion. We have a second.
Did you need to say something?
No.
No, ma'am.
No, standing up in back. I don't know his name. I'm sorry. Mr. Mills, did you need to say something? He stood up.
No.
So there's a motion. There's already a motion.
There's not a second.
Yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
I think we're good.
All right.
You're good, okay.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Glover. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
All right. We've got a-
Thank you.
So, Mr. Wilson, the sta, we're going to ask Ms. Brown, Mr. Antoine, to reach out to you, to make an appointment for you to come in and have a conversation with staff. And then that item will come back to the council at their first meeting in June, okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move on to item number 12, Madam Ainger.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 12 is a public hearing for the 2327 Consolidated Plan, the 2324 Annual Action Plan for the CDBG and Home Programs, and Assessment of Fair Housing. And I'll call forward Tiana Berryman for that presentation.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The city is required to complete and submit the Consolidated Plan and Assessment of Fair Housing every five years and the Annual Action Plan every year with the first, the first year being part of the Consolidated Plan. These are requirements of HUD for federal funding specifically for the Community Development Block Grant Program and our Home Investment Partnership Program. All right? So these plans assess and prioritize community needs and detail use of funds that are allocated to the city. So in the fall, staff contracted with Mosaic Community Planning to conduct research and collect data through public engagement, followed by drafting the Consolidated Plan and Assessment of Fair Housing. So today, we've got Ms. Jessica Fish with us as representing Mosaic to detail those plans.
And don't be offended when the whole crowd laugh. It's us, it's not you.
Thank you all for having me. As Tiana's mentioned, Mosaic has been working with the city since the fall on these plans. And we're very excited to be at the point of presenting the drafts, having them available for public comment and receiving your feedback. Two of the plans that I'm talking about today are the 2023 to 2027 Consolidated Plan and the 2023 Annual Action Plan. So these plans are both focused on identifying and prioritizing community development and housing needs in Greenville. And they serve as the funding application for the Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Investment Partnerships Program. They also are focused on developing an overall strategy, which is the five-year Consolidated Plan to target the federal grant money to areas with greatest needs, as well as the, an annual plan that details the specific projects that the city will be funding. In addition to looking at a wide variety of data about Greenville, we, getting the insight of residents and stakeholders about housing and community development was really a vital part of developing these plans. So community engagement for the plans included our project website, which is GreenvilleNCConPlan.com. And that's where everything about these plans is going to be available. Meeting dates, information about being able to download the plans and comment on them there is also available. We also had a Housing and Community Needs Survey that was hosted on the project website. We hosted four community workshops, three in-person workshops and one virtual in the fall. Conducted a variety of stakeholder interviews, two focus groups with staff and clients from the organizations CARE and Bring America Home Now. And we're currently in the public comment period when residents and stakeholders can read and comment on those drafts by visiting the project website, which is GreenvilleNCConPlan.com. And then written comments can also be mailed or delivered to the City of Greenville Housing Division. The city is also holding two public meetings and the public hearing tonight on the draft plans. And all of this information, again, about meeting dates and locations is available on that project website. And these draft plans also review key themes from our community engagement process. So I definitely recommend downloading those and checking those out to give us your feedback. Community engagement for the plans ran from October 2022 to January 2023. Residents and stakeholders right now can read and comment on the draft plans, again, as I mentioned, through April 23rd of 2023. Resident and stakeholder feedback will be incorporated into the plans following the public comment period. And the plans will be ready for city council approval in April this month. The programs that the plans cover are the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is focused on developing communities through decent housing, providing a suitable living environment and expanded economic opportunity, and are primarily focused on benefiting residents with low or moderate incomes. Also can focus on preventing or eliminating slum or blight or meeting an urgent need, such as in the case of a natural disaster. And you can see the different eligible activities here, which range from housing and other property activities, such as housing rehab, all the way to public facilities and services, economic development, public services through funding to nonprofit organizations and planning administration. The Home Investment Partnerships Program is focused on ensuring the long-term affordability of housing and really targets assistance to households earning less than 80% of the area median income. And you can see some eligible activities here, including both homeowner and renter activities. So the city will receive about 963,000 in Community Development Block Grant funding and 599,000 approximately in home funding in 2023. The projected funding amounts over the five-year period are about 4.4 million in Community Development Block Grant Program and about 2.75 million in home funding. So the Consolidated Plan details the city's goals and the amounts planned to be devoted to each of these goal areas over the five years. The largest area for funding is improving housing access and quality for both the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs at 1.5 million for each program over the five years. The city's 2023 proposed projects include housing rehabilitation of 15 units and public services to nonprofit organizations under the Community Development Block Grant Program. Housing rehabilitation is proposed to receive the largest share of funding of all of the projects at about 626,000 for 2023. And under the Home Program, down payment assistance for eight homeowners and new construction of rental and homeowner housing are planned to receive the bulk of the program funding. Some funding is also planned to be directed toward administration for both the programs. In addition to the Consolidated Plan and Annual Action Plan, the city conducted a fair housing study. The Assessment of Fair Housing assesses equal access to housing as set forth by the Civil Rights and Fair Housing Acts, which protect a person's right to own, sell, purchase, or rent housing of their choice without fear of unlawful discrimination. In addition to combating discrimination, recipients of HUD funds are required to take meaningful actions to overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities that are free from barriers restricting access to opportunity based on protected characteristics. And you can see those federally protected characteristics here. So taking a look at what's included in the Assessment of Fair Housing, it provides an analysis of the local fair housing landscape, what organizations and resources are available, things like fair housing laws and violations in the city. And it looks at four specific fair housing issues. Integration and segregation. So are people segregated in where they live by things like race, ethnicity, national origin? Areas of poverty? Is poverty clustered in specific areas of the city? And how does that overlap with issues of integration and segregation? Access to opportunity? So do residents of all neighborhoods have access to resources, things like employment, education, transportation, and a healthy environment? And then housing need, which includes issues like housing cost burden, overcrowding, and housing quality. And then the study also develops fair housing priorities and goals that Greenville can focus on over the next five years to improve fair access to housing and opportunity in the city. The AFH includes mapping analysis of segregation and integration in Greenville by things like race and ethnicity, national origin, and limited English proficiency. So here you can see an example of the population mapped by race and ethnicity by census tract. So different colors representing different races and ethnicities in the city and kind of seeing those residential patterns. And it also overlays mapping of population by race and ethnicity with analysis of access to opportunity factors. So this map is an example showing the school proficiency index. That's developed by HUD with light gray areas representing lower levels of school proficiency and dark gray areas indicating higher levels of proficiency. And that's overlaid by dots showing the population by race and ethnicity. And the AFH is also going to include similar analysis for other opportunity factors like labor market engagement, transportation access, parks and environmental quality, food access, and access to low-poverty neighborhoods. One of the main components of the Assessment of Fair Housing is the Goals and Priorities section, which provides some overarching goals along with recommendations for addressing fair housing issues in Greenville. The fair housing goals and priorities identified include implementing place-based community investment strategies to increase access to opportunity in racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty and low and moderate income census tracts, supporting residents' engagement with the labor market, increasing the supply of deeply affordable housing in good condition while preventing displacement of current residents, increasing housing choice and access for people with disabilities, supporting fair housing education and enforcement efforts, and reducing homelessness in Greenville within the next five years. And specific strategies related to each of these are detailed in the plan. So again, we encourage everyone to read and comment on the draft plans on the project website through April 23rd at GreenvilleNCConPlan.com. And written comments can also be mailed or delivered to the City of Greenville Housing Division at 201 West Fifth Street, Greenville, North Carolina 27834, or email to info@mosaiccommunityplanning.com. Thank you very much and I'm happy to answer any questions. I would love to hear your feedback as well.
Any questions?
Sure. Got a couple of questions.
Councilmember Blackburn.
I noticed that administration costs, sometimes those were as much as the grants themselves. Can you all speak a little bit about what those represent?
I'd be happy to. So the administration costs, you may have been looking at the total over the five-year period. So the city is capped at 15% for the CDBG program and 10% for home. And so we allocate the maximum for those two areas and are not able to exceed. So at no point would we spend more than 15% of CDBG or 10% of home on administrative costs.
And that was exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you. Because I know that with any kind of grant, there's typically a certain percentage that is used for administering those funds. So that's what that is.
That's right. I'm sorry. It's 20% for CDBG. But yes, that's right.
20% for CBDG?
CDBG and 10% for home.
10% for home? Okay. And are these monies, and I think I asked this question a lot. Are these monies available to anybody?
So the funds are funneled into the community through various programs. So a portion of it, you know, we fund our owner-occupied rehab program or our nonprofit grants, funding that's gone to our tax credit projects. So we have buckets, if you will, of activities that are eligible under each of these programs and those are funded. And then each individual project could receive a portion of that. And then there are certain stipulations for all of the programs that are, there's guidance that HUD makes available. We have, there are certain qualifications for partners and potential beneficiaries. So we have to follow those regulations.
So these are typically two organizations or corporations? And not individuals?
Both, both. So occasionally, we work with, we may partner with an agency, like a nonprofit, to expand their programs and, you know, for the sake or benefit of lower moderate income individuals. So whatever happens, you know, whatever partnerships occur, they are expected to meet one of the national objectives. And then we have programs that the city works to benefit individuals directly. For example, our rehab program or our down payment assistance. So there may not be an agency in between the city's funding and serving a beneficiary in some respects. But there may be partners and others. Does that make sense?
That makes perfect sense. Thank you. And is Lytech part of this? The Lytech?
Yes. So we use, the city uses home funds to supplement tax credit projects or help to fill, you know, help with gap financing and things of like, of that nature. So for example, the Arlington Trace Project used $1 million of home funds from a previous year.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right. Any other questions? Seen none? Yeah. Thank you very much. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion. You don't need a motion, do you?
We do. We need to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Daniels, seconded by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you very much. Move on to lucky number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is an ordinance to annex, I'm sorry. It's late. An ordinance to designate Brown Hill Cemetery located at 811 Howell Street and further identified as Pitt County Parcel Number 28989 as a local historic landmark. And I'll call, all right. I'll call Tony Parker, planner, to the podium for the presentation.
I am glad this is not an annexation because I would be lost.
No more for him.
So this is an ordinance to designate Brown Hill Cemetery as a local historic landmark. It is located at 811 Howell Street. This is a view of the cemetery from the northwest from the entrance. This is our location map. It's over on Howell Street, near the school over there. It began as a slave cemetery. It became a community center known as, a community cemetery known as Cooper and Cooper's Field. In 1939, it was designated as Brown Hill Cemetery. It's the largest, maybe the oldest, black cemetery in the city of Greenville. In 1969, the Cemetery of Sycamore Hill Missionary Baptist Church was moved from downtown to Brown Hill Cemetery. Sycamore Hill Missionary Baptist Church was the largest and most prominent black church in downtown Greenville. It's historic, a historic cemetery is vital as a historic research and educational tool. The significance for this parcel is archaeology, persons, and history. This is from E. Horizons Plan. Culture on historic buildings should be restored and reused in order to foster a sense of place, promote green building practices, and emphasize Greenville's unique heritage. On November, excuse me, on November 14th, 2022, the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, recommended Brown Hill Cemetery be designated as a local landmark. On March 28th, 2023, the Historic Preservation Commission, HPC, voted unanimously to recommend Brown Hill as a cemetery to be designated as a local landmark. Staff recommends approval and be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Parker? I mean, seriously, you've asked everybody else a question.
That was perfect. Good information.
Move to approve the item.
Second.
Is it a public hearing?
You said no.
I can't understand what you're saying.
Oh, okay.
I said, I don't know.
Oh, I said, I don't know. I thought you said no.
All right. Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come- Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Come on, Ginger. I've got two shrugs. All right, seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. First person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. I think Ms. Pierce said she wanted to speak in opposition to this. Sorry, I couldn't hear.
Where'd she go?
You're here for tennis, okay. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
I second that.
All right. Motion's been made by Mayor Pro Tim Glover, second by Councilmember Smiley. Any other discussion?
Long overdue, glad to take part of approving this tonight.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
Very good. All right, let's move on to number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 14 is an ordinance to designate Cherry Hill Cemetery located at 401 West Second Street and further identified as Pitt County Parcel 28966 as a local historic landmark. Again, Mr. Parker.
Are you sure this isn't an annexation?
This is for Cherry Hill Cemetery, which is down the road. It's 401 West Second Street. This is a view west from the entrance. Our location is right down the road here. It was created in 1872. A part of the cemetery was set aside for a portion, excuse me, a part of the cemetery set aside for a portion of, for the burial of black citizens, which was rare at the time. Leading citizens of Pitt County, Greenville between 1872 and 1924 were buried there. The historic cemetery, once again, is vital, is a historic research and educational tool. And for this cemetery, again, same thing, it's archaeology, persons, and history for its significance. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Parker?
I do note that there are extensive histories for, prepared by
Roger Cameron.
Roger Cameron in the agenda, which would be available for download by the public, right? If they had more interest in the bullet points you
Is there any way that you could read that?
I'm looking at it. It goes on for some pages. Anyway, it's just fascinating.
So he could read it a lot faster than I could.
It's just, a lot of this history is fascinating.
It is fascinating. It is. It's been a pleasure working on these.
Certainly, we don't have time here to go through every piece of every part of it, but it is in the agenda, all dozen pages of each one of them, and I encourage people to look it up.
And these reports, of course, will be held in the files in our office, and any time, anybody can request reading or copies.
This is one of my favorite places in Greenville, and I'm delighted to have access to the histories. And I know that you are an absolutely incredible historian, and so I look forward to reading through them all. And this is a question perhaps for us to talk about at another time, but there's a tomb of Elizabeth's wife, and I never could find out who, anything about Elizabeth, just way over on this other part of the cemetery. And I've just always wondered about Elizabeth, and maybe you know something about Elizabeth we can talk about sometime.
He's got it. He's got it right here.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
All right, seen none. The public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to our final public hearing of the night.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 15 is an ordinance to designate the Jesse R. Moy House and Grounds located at 408 West Fifth Street and further identified as Pitt County Parcel 25142 as a local historic landmark. Again, Mr. Parker.
There we go. And this is my last presentation this evening. Jesse R. Moy House, otherwise known as the Music House, is right down at Fifth Street. That's a picture of the outside of the house. It's at 408 West Fifth Street. This is a picture showing you the wraparound front porch there. Location is down the road. It's your map right there. It was built in 1902. Jesse R. Moy was a locally prominent figure in business and community affairs for our city. The New Bern architect Herbert W. Simpson's one who designed this one. It is a remarkable style of a Queen Anne and Colonial Revival architectural style. It was built in a period of Greenville's economic prosperity and expansion. The house represents not just the prosperity of the owner, but of the town itself. The significance for this one is persons and architectural. Again, Horizons states that we want to restore and reuse items in order to foster a sense of place, promote green building practices, and emphasize Greenville's unique heritage. November 16th, SHPO said yes, and November 28th, the HPC voted unanimously to recommend the Jesse R. Moy House and Grounds be designated a local landmark. Staff recommends approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for Mr. Parker? Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Public hearing is now open. Those who speak on behalf of the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. Those in opposition to the applicant may come forward. Please state your name for the record. The first person has 10 minutes. All others have three minutes. Seen none. The public hearing is now closed. Open for a board discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I do have a question.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Blackburn, second by Councilmember Daniels. All the, I'm just kidding.
No, this is really an important
Councilmember Blackburn.
This is a critical question. Is it more appropriate to call it the Jesse Moy House or the Music House? I need to know. This is important information.
There's a lady in the back.
Saying that this is the Jesse R. Moy House and Grounds. That's the proper name for it.
Okay.
Locally, we can call it the Music House, but as far as historians go, it is the Jesse R. Moy House, considering he is also the person who you are recognizing.
Okay, good. That was an important clarification. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
All right. Motion's been made. Probably second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
Look at the HPC getting 3-0 tonight. It's a good record. 3-0. All right, let's move on to other items of business. Number 18, Madam Manager.
Thank you.
Our final item before we get into the really exciting stuff.
Budget, item number 18, as a budget ordinance, Amendment Number Eight, to the 2223 City Greenville Budget, the Special Revenue Grant Fund, the Capital Projects Fund, the ARPA Fund, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund, and the Greenway Capital Projects Fund. And Financial Services Director Byron Hayes has the presentation. Mr. Hayes.
Also known as the closer. Close us out. Mr. Hayes, close us out.
I'd really like to open one of these.
Uh, no problem.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Budget Amendment Eight. Budget Amendment Eight includes adjustments to the General Fund, the Engineering, Fire Rescue, and Greenways Capital Projects Funds, the Grant Special Revenue Fund, and the ARPA Fund. The amendment also includes an updated ARPA funding plan based on new design and cost estimates, as well as recognition of additional funding to fully fund all components of the build grant project. Breakdown of the amendments. We are recognizing e-payables revenues received in the current fiscal year. It's an increase to the General Fund of $32,000. We are redirecting funding within the General Fund for the Elm Street Drainage Project Design. It's a neutral impact to the General Fund of $35,000. We are recognizing grant funds received from the North Carolina Municipal Grant for Recreation Programming at River Park North. It's an increase to the Grant Special Revenue Fund of $31,000. And we are recognizing funds received as debt proceeds for the public safety radios, an increase to the Fire Rescue Capital Projects Fund of $75,000. We are also recognizing additional revenue and expenses for the build grant project based on the final construction bids received. That's an increase to the build grant project to $48.5 million. As you can see, this is a breakdown of the funding sources for that project. Additionally, we are reallocating the ARPA funding based on updated cost estimates received for various projects within the ARPA funding. It's a, the ARPA funds have not changed from $24.7 million. However, the $10 million unrestricted funding will be used mainly for the build grant match, just over $9.8 million. We are also recognizing additional funding received from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the construction of the South Tar River Greenway, an increase to the Greenways Capital Project Fund of $61,000. And we, lastly, are reallocating funding within the General Fund to pay for parking lot lease payments in the current fiscal year. It's a neutral impact to the General Fund of $18,000. And as a result of the amendments, this increased, this increases the City of Greenville Operating Fund to $166.2 million. And staff recommends approval of the City of Greenville Operating Fund Ordinance, the Engineering Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, the Capital Projects Fund Ordinance, the Special Revenue Fund Ordinance, and also approving the updated ARPA funding plan for the ARPA Fund Ordinance. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Hayes? Councilmember Daniels.
Can you, can you go back about three slides, please?
Yes, ma'am.
There.
Okay.
Tell me the Greenville Terrace. Has that changed, or is that totally 100 million? Greenville Terrace improvements?
Yeah, oh, yeah, that's right. So we did reduce this sum based on current expenses within the project right now, but the rest of it will be funded from the General Fund.
From what?
The General Fund.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it's still $1 million.
Okay, thank you.
Those talons are coming back in.
I guess you're not doing anything with the, the drain park, the building over in there, over there?
So as you can, as you can see on this slide as well, that actually increases to almost $2.4 million.
You should feel good. Monica got reduced $497,000. You got 1.38 million for your project.
You got 1.3 million more, Rose.
Carry on, Monica.
That project is still very much
You see where the love is over here.
That, the public works drain pipe. They got a little
Very popular.
That's, a lot of demand for that project.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion's made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Daniels. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the most anticipated part of the meeting, the City Managers Report. And all the staff in the back say
Oh, I know the four names.
The ones that are hanging out here were hoping for a raise. I guess that's us, actually. Anyway, all right, we'll move to, how about Councilmember Daniels?
I just want to say thank you to everybody for all that you do.
That was wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Blackburn.
I would like to take a minute to use my comments, just to respond to the folks who came earlier regarding tennis and pickleball, just how much I appreciated everyone being here, and how much I learned tonight, and how much I appreciate everyone who came and everyone who spoke. Think that even though there was some discontent certainly expressed, what I saw when I look at this on the whole, what I see is amazing, because we have an incredible depth of support for our recreation and parks programs. And that is something that we can absolutely feel amazing about and be grateful for in our community. I think for us as city council members, the essential message from this evening is that we cannot underestimate the importance of recreation and parks in our city. I was saddened to hear about the reduction in courts, whether they're pickleball, well, pickleball hasn't existed previously in our city this way, but the reduction in courts. So I hope that we as a city, with ECU and the schools and the county, can find a way to make sure we enlarge and expand our offerings of public tennis courts, because tonight, what we saw was that there's really an incredible depth of demand for that. At the same time, we also heard support for pickleball. This is a new sport, and it's something that people enjoy, and make sure that at the same time, we're also addressing the need, and I think we'll need, we will continue to need more pickleball courts. I think the other message that's important for me from this evening is that sometimes we're called on, kind of like Solomon, you know, to divide a baby. And I hope that we don't look at these issues that way. I'd like for us to not look at these issues as either/or, we either have this or that, but we have it all. We have tennis and pickleball, and we have adequate play areas for both. We have recreation and parks. We have programming and sports. We have, that we have something for everyone and what our community expects and needs. Someone spoke tonight about how he was here from Colorado and looking for ways to get outside. That's incredibly important for us as a city, to make sure we provide those opportunities. So tonight, even though there was some tension, or let's just say some dissatisfaction that was expressed, I think if we kind of look beyond this present moment, we see an incredible opportunity to do more, to do more tennis courts, to do more pickleball courts, and to do more parks and recreation opportunities throughout our city. I'd like to take one minute and just to express my ongoing grief about the loss of J.C. On Epps, and just to share a moment that I had with Mayor Pro Tim Glover and Councilmember Daniels, when I was just really mad, and I was like, oh, we need to do this, we need to blame this and that agency, and just really angry, and I just really appreciate what they said to me, is that we're hurting because of this loss. And it's maybe a tendency to reach out in anger when you feel pain. And what I hope, again, as a community, that we will all do is to shoulder this grief together as a community, and to look for ways to keep this from happening again. And that's my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Smiley.
I have no comment.
Mayor Pro Tim Glover.
I have no comments.
About that. I will be very brief. I want to wish my youngest daughter, Caroline, a happy birthday. Tomorrow, she turns seven years old. So Yeah. And I share this story every time. I said, I remember the night that she was born, I was sitting, I think in, I think I was sitting in Councilmember Daniel's seat, and I got the text message that my wife said she was getting ready to have a baby, and Rick was freaking out. And Rick's like, you need to get up and leave. And I said, well, let's just wait until the, you know, this portion of the meeting's done or whatever, and then I'll recuse myself and ask to leave. And he kept freaking out or whatever, and finally, when the item got finished, we asked to be recused from the meeting, or I don't know if that's the right term for it, but, and I left, and I think about right before midnight, my daughter was born that night, so. And she told me that I could not have another city council meeting on her birthday, because we had one last year, and she was really mad about it, and I still haven't lived that moment down.
Oh, no.
So we did it a day early. So, happy birthday, Caroline.
Happy birthday.
And with, and with that, I will hand it over to our city attorney to go into closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council members, the city administration requests that council adopt the following motions, holding a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11 for the following reasons: to discuss several matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations, and pursuant to North Carolina General Statute Section 143-318.11a3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the following lawsuits entitled Eric Stephen Farrington, Craig DeMamrose, DeMamrose, plaintiffs versus the City of Greenville and Pitt County Board of Education defendants. Second lawsuit, Chase, Jean Matthews, Jackie Olson, Alexander Pascal, Tiffany Shaw, Mark Owens Jr., Barbara Owens, Matthew Paschal, Tiffany Shaw, Mark Owens Jr., Barbara Owens, Matthew Allen, and Jessica Lovender individually and behalf of all other similarly situated plaintiffs versus the City of Greenville, Phil Berger in his capacity as President, Pro Tem Porree of the Senate, and Tim Moore in his capacity as Speaker of the House of Representatives defendants. That is the suggested motion.
Is there any way you could read that one more time?
Make sure we cover the bases.
Second.
All right. Motion's been made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Blackburn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Motion passes 4-0.